Good evening and welcome to the Norwood School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, December 16th, 2020. We have quite the agenda this evening, so we're going to go ahead and get started right away with a few business matters. First order of business is to approve our minutes. There are two sets of minutes from the December 2nd meeting. The first is the business session, and the second is executive session. Is there a motion from the school committee to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Emery. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, so currently Joan Giblin is not on the meeting, but she will be joining us a little bit late. So for now, it's passed four to zero. Next order of business is correspondence. Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Dave Catania, could you share your warrant report with us?
Yes, and I printed this time, so it's not confused last week's. Okay, so I signed warrants to the amounts of $17,262.67, $37,421.77, $9,565.60, for a grand total of $1,462,512.83.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions on the warrants? Okay, moving right along. At this time, it is public forum. As a reminder to the community, the way that we are utilizing public forum right now is via our email address, NPSchoolcommittee@norwood.k12 MA US. I'm just going to pull up that email address and confirm that there are no emails to be read. And I do not see any this evening, so at this time at 7:07, I will declare our public forum closed. But if members of the community have anything that they would like to write to the school committee about that is under our purview, you can do so, and I will read them at our next meeting, which will be on January 13th, 2021. That sounds a little strange. But at this time, we do have a couple of appearances, and our first appearance this evening is focused on our very exciting middle school project. And I'm going to welcome Alan Slater, who is the Chair of the Middle School Building Committee, to get us started. So welcome, Alan, and thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Thompson, members of the committee, for having us here tonight. Middle School Building Committee has been busy over the summer and fall working through the MSBA, Mass School Building Authority, procedures, to first hire an owner's project manager and then an architect. And as you know, since you were involved in the process, it's a very complicated process, but we finally completed that. And we've hired both an owner's project manager and an architect engineer. So as an owner's project manager, we've hired Compass Project Management. And as an architect engineer, we've hired AI3. And if those names are familiar to people, that's the same team that we had, who were responsible for the Norwood High School. So we're very excited to have them again, and we're looking forward to working with them within the next several years on a new Coakley Middle School project. So with that, with your permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to turn it over to AI3.
Thank you, Emery.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the school committee, and especially Building Committee Chairman Slater for inviting AI3 and Compass here tonight to discuss the new Coakley Middle School project. My name is Jim Jordan with AI3 Architects, and I'm a partner at AI3. Joining me tonight is also Justin Tebow, who's a Senior Associate and Project Architect with AI3, Kristin Kendall, who's a Project Architect, and also Keilia Kentor, who's our educational planner that'll be working closely with us at the beginning phases of the project. And you'll hear more from Justin and Keilia later in the presentation. The process we're about to delve into tonight on the first slide, I'm sorry, the second slide in the series, is a true collaboration with the school committee, the school building committee, the owner's project manager, our design team that we put together for you, the Norwood community, and especially the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The design process is much different than the process we collaborated with you in designing the Norwood High School over 12 years ago. The MSBA design process is divided into eight modules, two of which, as Alan mentioned, you have already completed. Each module has multiple phases with specific milestones and reviews before the next phase can begin. We want to share with you the project's schedule and highlight for you the aspects of the process that will require your input forward. We are currently in Module 3. The first two components of Module 3 include the PDP and the PSR, shown in orange. Just want to make sure everybody can see the full screen and see the schedule on page 2. Any confirmation of that? It looks kind of fuzzy on my screen, but if there's no objection to it, I'll keep moving forward. The first component is the preliminary design program, or PDP, as we'll refer to it. The key aspect of this phase is the facilitation of the educational visioning sessions and the development of the educational plan, which is done in collaboration with the superintendent, faculty, and staff. It is important to note that during the PDP, the 6-8 versus 5-8 grade level configuration will be explored in both the ed plan and during the visioning sessions. The PDP is scheduled for submission to the MSBA on March 26, 2021. And just to note, a grade level decision by the school committee is not required for the completion of the PDP. The second component of the feasibility study phase is the preferred schematic report, or PSR. During this phase, the ed plan will be submitted for the final time, and the 6-8 versus 5-8 grade level configuration discussion will continue to be discussed. In fact, multiple design options for both the 6-8 and 5-8 building concept will be explored at that time. We will also engage the community on three separate occasions to discuss the status of the project and to also discuss grade level configurations. The goal here is to have the school committee vote on a preferred grade level configuration by August 6 or June 9 meeting that coincides with the school committee meeting's schedule. The PSR will be submitted to the MSBA with the preferred option and the agreed-to grade level configuration by July 7 of 2021. After the submission of the PSR, Module 4 schematic design phase begins. After submission of the PSR in July of 2021, the MSBA will meet on August 25 to discuss and review your project at their scheduled Facilities Assessment Subcommittee meeting, where they will evaluate the responsiveness of the design to the actual educational plan. Schematic design will be completed in January of 2022. MSBA Board approval and Norwood Town Meeting will take place between March and May of 2022. After Town Meeting approval, Module 6, where we start design development, will begin and be completed by August of 2022. And then construction documents will begin and wrap up by January of 2023. The plan is to begin construction in the spring of 2023. So if we could go to the next slide, we'll take a close look at all the required activities and documents that are included in the PDP phase. The PDP involves an extensive amount of investigation of the existing middle school building and its associated site, as well as any other sites that are under consideration in town, whether it be sites identified by Building Committee members or School Committee members. The blue and black text on this slide highlights the activities that will require school committee input. As you can see, most of the information is developed and vetted through the Building Committee. However, the educational program and development of the space summary, which determines the overall square footage of the building, requires school committee input. Included in the PDP are the meeting minutes of both the school committee and building committee. Documentation of community outreach is also included in the PDP report. If we move to the next slide, it'll identify the detailed breakdown of each task required to complete the PDP and PSR components of the feasibility study, which concludes in July of 2021. The items that require school committee and school department review and action are highlighted at the top of the slide. The first component is educational visioning, which Keilia will discuss in a moment. The second component is centered around the educational plan. The draft version of this educational plan, we're planning to complete on February 4 of 2021. We're hoping for school committee review of the ed plan on their February 24 meeting in anticipation of a possible vote on the educational plan by March 10. The third component is the grade level configuration. This process will begin during the visioning sessions, which actually kick off tomorrow afternoon at 1 o'clock with our very first visioning session with faculty and staff and core leadership. And it'll continue through the month of January. And it'll be, we'll be continuing to discuss the grade level configuration as part of the PSR, hopefully a school committee vote on May 26 or as late as June 9 to decide on whether you're going forward with a 6-8 or a 5-8 grade level configuration. That decision needs to be made before the submission of the PSR in July of 2021. So with that, I'm going to ask Justin to take a look at the next slide, which focuses on the ed plan and grade level configuration process. And then we'll have Keilia follow after Justin's done presenting the next two slides.
Yeah, so to break down the educational plan component, what we're really looking for, it's actually, it's a collaborative effort between the design team, as well as Dr. Thompson and his faculty and staff. So we have sent over Word document templates from previous projects to give a sense of, of an example of what these ed plans look like. And those can be used and updated to match the Norwood visions and goals for the future. And these documents will include past, present, and future visions. And the future is really the key here. Where is the school going? And what can we do to support those goals and visions as the project moves forward? Some other items that will be included in the ed plan is teaching methodology, student dining and food services, how does Coakley work with the other schools in the district, or not? Student dining and food service, technology and security, transportation. So it's really an all-encompassing document with a lot of different pieces, all analyzing past, present, and future. And as Jim mentioned, we're looking to get a draft back by February 4. What we will do, the design team will take all of those different pieces and format them and combine them into a working document. And that's what will be presented at the February 24 school committee meeting for discussion. As you mentioned, we're looking for a vote on the 10th, and the vote is to submit. It's not to necessarily approve. This is a draft version, and the MSBA understands that. Final decisions for all of this will be for the July date, but this is just to submit at this milestone. So it's not grade level configuration. It's just the draft of where the current ed plan is at the point in time. So moving past the March, as Jim mentioned, we'll be focusing on the actual grade level configuration, leaning towards 5-8 or 6-8, and analyzing options, presenting research, hearing from the community, concerns, comments, pros, cons, all of which are important. We want to hear what people have to say, and we want to be supportive in providing the information requested. So that work will evolve and ultimately help inform you on your decision, May 26 or June 9, basically the end of May, beginning of June, as Jim mentioned. Do you want to go to the next slide? How we're going to get to that community consensus, Jim already mentioned it a little bit. We're proposing multiple community outreach options. And what's shown on the slide here are community forums. These are discussions with the community. And we feel it important to get out in front of the community soon, very, very quickly, at the very beginning of the process. So the first one, we actually have scheduled for January 14. And the overview of that is more of a roadmap of what the design team is intending on doing as far as research, as far as professional documentation, document studies of the existing Coakley, as well as the elementary schools that Jim had mentioned that we are already completing, and to sort of show the community what is sort of occurring over the next couple of months. Also, you'll notice at every one of these community outreach pieces, there's a line item for community concerns. We want to hear what the community has to say for what are their thoughts? What is on their mind? What is the big unknown to them? And it will be touched on, I believe, later, but if not, the project is developing a website, so this can also inform questions that go on the website, FAQs. We can post information and documents and stuff like that. So this first one is really an overview of what we are going to be doing. The second one, scheduled for mid-March, or not scheduled yet, we're anticipating mid-March, is to basically tell people and show them what we have been doing and present the research and the results of the research. And then again, hear any community concerns and move forward that way. Third one, similar, update on the research and the discussions, and then the community concerns again. And by having these three meetings and discussions before the school committee decision on May 26, June 9, we're hoping that it will make that decision a little bit easier in that there'll be a sort of a clear consensus as far as which way everybody is leaning. It's our intent to address any questions or comments or anything along the way as quickly and efficiently as possible, just to gain support and momentum, whichever path we end up choosing. So one thing real quick before I turn it over to Keilia, too. There's one last community forum shown on this slide, July of 2021. Just to be clear, that is not the last community forum for the project. As it was mentioned, this is going on for the next couple of years. This is just to show, at every sort of major milestone and step of the way, we will reach out to the community, have these discussions with them, and sort of show them the roadmap that we're going to be using moving forward. Again, hear their concerns and comments and sort of gain that momentum throughout the entire project. We're not just going to disengage with them after the grade level configuration discussion. So this isn't a three- or four-month project. It's a two- or three-year project. So those are going to be continuing to evolve and to be integrated into the whole schedule. So with that, I will turn it over to Keilia, who will discuss the upcoming vision sessions in more detail.
Thanks, Justin. As Jim mentioned, our visioning process did begin on December 1 with our kickoff meeting. And the visioning kickoff is where we work with your core leadership team to get a sense of what the needs, goals, and the culture of the school and community are. It was at this meeting that we started to establish the guiding principles for this project, which really gives us the criteria to define what success is for this project. We also discussed some of the critical issues that the design team needs to be aware of, and we identified the key stakeholders who were engaging in this process. We met again with the core leadership team yesterday to refine the agenda for our first visioning workshop, which is happening tomorrow. And this first session is where we'll be working with stakeholders to really get them excited for the process moving forward. We're going to be having several interactive discussions and activities aimed at familiarizing everyone with the concepts that make up 21st century learning, as well as demonstrating the possibilities of what the new Coakley Middle School could be. And we'll be discussing the participants' vision for the future of Coakley and employing live polling to gauge where everyone's priorities lay. Our conversations are really going to be aimed at understanding how these concepts might tie into the specific pedagogical, cultural, and operational needs of Coakley Middle School. We'll be meeting again with core leadership in the new year on January 6. And again, this will be to refine any last-minute details that we need to hammer out for our seventh workshop, which will be the second visioning session. This workshop is really going to allow us the opportunity to look at how 21st design century concepts would be implemented in your new middle school. So in addition to discussing the types of space that are needed and the spatial adjacencies that'll maximize the utility of these spaces, this workshop is going to provide the participants with hands-on opportunities to influence how these concepts are physically expressed in the building's design. So throughout both of these workshops, we'll be revisiting those topics that are most important to the Coakley Middle School community, including grade configuration, student services, the schoolhouse or neighborhood concept, and teacher collaboration. And the feedback that we get from these visioning workshops are also going to be providing critical information for the educational plan portion of the PDP, including the space summaries, the adjacency diagrams, and of course, they'll feed into the larger conversations on grade configuration. So with that, I'll hand it back to Jim.
Thank you, Keilia. I think the last slide that we have to share with you tonight is just giving you an update, a real snapshot of the key dates that are ahead for us and as we work through the process with you and the school building committee. The draft ed plan will be due on February 4. That'll be, as we mentioned, a collaboration between us, Keilia, the educational planner that's on our team, as well as Superintendent Thompson and his staff, and core leadership will have a lot of input in creating a draft document. We've already begun to share sample narratives with them that they can fill out and vet through their staff and stakeholders within the school, and of course, within the Coakley Middle School staff, faculty and staff. On February 24, we're looking to have that school committee meeting that I referred to earlier to have you review the ed plan, so you should see a copy of that on the 4th of February, so you have a little bit of time almost to review that and prepare with questions or concerns that you may have and bring those to our attention at the meeting on February 24. After that, the PDP is really beginning to wrap up at that point in time. A lot of on-the-ground investigation is going to take place, as you saw in slide number 2, I believe it was, 2 or 3, which gave you almost a table of contents view of all the components that are required in the PDP. The overall document will be well over 600 pages long. A handful of items we have to focus on with you to meet that deadline. We're looking to submit that on March 10. And just to make everybody clear, the educational plan, as well as any preliminary options that we develop as part of that plan, will all be either a 6-8 or a 5-8 grade level configuration. And no vote is required from the school committee to submit that PDP plan to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Right about March 10 through March 26 will be the wrap-up of the PDP, and then we'll move right into the preferred schematic report. At that point in time, the final ed plan will need to be voted on by the school committee around the March 26 meeting date. And then we will look at 5-8, as we mentioned, and 6-8 configurations through not only your committee, the school building committee, and also community forums. And we're hopeful to get to, well, there'll be some comfort and decision made with the school committee on May 26, or if necessary, the June 9 meeting. So that's kind of the milestone components as they relate to collaboration with your committee chairwoman. So I think that's kind of the majority of the presentation. We'd love to answer any questions you have. I hope everybody saw all the slides. It looks like we might have had a few hiccups at the beginning, but we could go back and review those in detail.
Thank you, Jim and Justin, and Keilia. You get to talk to me often, so I'm not going to ask you any questions right now. However, some of my colleagues may have questions or comments. So for the school committee, is there any feedback or questions at this time? Alan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Justin briefly alluded to it, but we're in the process of developing a website. We hope to have that up and running around the end of the year. But it's going to have, you know, all the materials, you know, the reports, the documentations, the minutes, you know, of our meetings, the agendas, progress reports, some FAQs. And we're also going to try to have like a feedback loop where people can ask us questions and we can give them answers. So, you know, that's presently being developed by people way smarter than me and that stuff. And we're looking forward to having that and providing information to the public.
Thank you. Maya, did you have a question?
I just wanted to say that I'm really excited that this is really kicking off and moving forward. This is, you know, it was several years ago that I was one of the school committee representatives to the long-term building study, and we, you know, looked at the condition of all of our schools, and it was absolutely very clear that the Coakley Middle School really needed an update, and it was having, currently has very significant problems. And so I'm very excited that this is moving forward.
Dave Catania?
Yeah, I just had a question. Like, overall, in the middle schools you've worked on, what's been the trend? Has it been more 5-8 or just more standard 6-8? Just trying to get a sense of what other people are doing.
It's funny you ask that. I think a good case study is, I guess it's to be determined. We aren't really seeing a trend either way. When you look at two projects that we did with the city of Quincy recently, about four or five years ago, we designed a new middle school for them, and they asked for it to be a 6-8 middle school. Five years later, they asked us for another middle school design, and it was a 5-8 grade level configuration. Obviously, there was some community concern. It was a neighborhood school, and there was some anxiety about moving the 5th grade into the 6-8th grade environment that was already established. So we worked closely with the community and the superintendent, Rick DiChristofaro, and he was convinced a 5-8 was the solution for that community, and the community ultimately agreed with what we presented the facts to him. So by the same token, we've been working with NADIC for 20 years now. We designed two new middle schools for them, and both of them have been 5-8 grade level configurations. So we really see it going in multiple ways. A current project we're working on now that's further along than Coakley is by almost a year and a half is actually studied 5-8 and 6-8, and they decided 6-8 was the right thing for them. So we really come to the process with no bias, and we really want the community to be engaged as much as possible, as well as the school committee. We enter it with an open mind and let the facts be known to everybody. It's really the decision that you guys want to make that's best for your community, and we'll do everything we can to share information and research that we've collected over the years with you to make that informed decision.
And Mark? So I know that we'll be making the decision of whether we should go with a 6-8 or a 5-8, but my question is, you know, thinking long-term, how flexible are those configurations so that if somewhere down the line, you know, 15, 20 years from now, or even shorter, we somehow rebuild our elementary schools and we suddenly can fit the 5th grade back into the elementary schools? You know, are we stuck with a 5-8 configuration that doesn't, no longer works for a 6-8 school? Or is it flexible in that way?
I would have to say, the designs that we've produced and designs that are occurring nationally by other architects across the country have really focused on academic neighborhoods, collaboration space, subdividing the grade levels into smaller groups, doing team teaching still at the 5th grade level, and more smaller neighborhoods at the 6-8th grade level. So it really becomes difficult to design a 6-8 and then just have it added on to as a 5-8 10 or 15 years later. Because they're so intertwined with collaboration space in lieu of just seeing an addition placed on it. It really, when you go through the design process, it's really a holistic approach on how each of the components and grade levels can have equal and universal amenities and collaboration space. And it becomes difficult just to add on another grade level to that structure, whether it's a floor level or an addition. Our experience has been, it's always been like an afterthought and it isn't really intertwined with the original design. So I think making the decision that's correct for you in the next five to 10 years is the way to look at the problem, not what makes the most sense currently, right now. If that helps at all, I don't know.
Could I add something to that, Jim?
Sure.
This is Tim Bonfati from Compass. And if I, I'm not sure if I heard the question right, but I think if you were to do a five-through-eight school and population increases occurred that you felt like you needed to use that five-through-eight as a six-through-eight down the road, which I thought was what your question was. That I don't think would require much, that wouldn't be very difficult. They're not going to be that significantly different. So I think what Jim's saying, adding on to it later on would be maybe a little more difficult. But I think from adapting a five-through-eight to, you know, to a six-through-eight because you have a population that needs a six-through-eight, I don't think you'd see much difference. Jim, would you agree with that?
Well, if I understood the response, adding, if you start out with a five-through-eight and transition to a six-through-eight, that wouldn't be an issue.
Right.
Yeah, that's a population decrease, it sounds like. But if you're trying to increase the population by adding a complete new grade level to the established design, that becomes more complicated. And in the end, it really doesn't become integrated as it should be for, if you design it from a five-through-eight.
What I think the question was, and I may be wrong, was let's say you design a five-through-eight for 1,000 students. And then later on down the line, your 1,000 students are, you know, because of population increases are made up of grades six-through-eight. You know what I'm saying? Wasn't that the question?
Yeah, I was just wondering basically, because you know, if you're designing a five-through-eight, I'm assuming that you're going to have significant appropriate, you know, space separation for fifth grade class versus, you know, you know, not 100% integration. I think that's what a lot of parents are really concerned about at the six-through-eight level. And so I'm just wondering, you know, if somewhere down the road we're able to build a centralized elementary school, that's not on the map, please, nobody crucify me, that, you know, if we go to a six-through-eight, is it now so compartmentalized for five-through-eight that it's no longer really functioning well for a six-through-eight environment? That's where I was trying to make sure that, you know, even though we're talking about designing a five-through-eight, that it is flexible enough that if in the future it needs to go back down to a six-to-eight, that it would be flexible enough now.
Yeah, I think, yes, it is flexible enough to go from a five-through-eight to a six-through-eight. The only issue that I'm bringing up is when you add more students to the established design, that's where the complexity comes in. But if the amount of students is the same because it's a five-through-eight or you're changing to a six-through-eight, but the student population remains the same, I don't think there's an issue there at all if I'm hearing the question correctly.
Chinlin, something you want to add?
This is Chinlin, and I'm with Compass Project Management as well. I just want to also add that in terms of this kind of flexibility could also be one of the evaluation criteria that as we move, we would look at each option, we can ask the design team to test it out to see how easy is it to be, should a need arise that you need to change it at a later day? And then we can then vet it out to see what is the better option as we move forward.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee members at this time? Dr. Thompson or Dr. Frazek, was there anything that you wanted to add tonight about this project?
No.
No, it's just really exciting.
Yeah, it is exciting. We are looking forward to our visioning session, first one tomorrow. And I will take this opportunity to remind the community that our elementary schools are overcrowded at this point in time. They are stacked one on top of the other, which is one of the big obstacles we had in trying to develop a hybrid learning model that would, or even a full in-person model. That is one of our constraints, is its facilities at the elementary level and also at the middle school level. Because there's buildings, there's parts of the building that cannot be used because of ventilation. So we're all very anxious and hopeful that we're going to have something really fantastic. I don't know if anyone noticed that first drawing, it might not end up being on the first slide, but it's pretty exciting, their initial drawings. And we're looking forward to working with AI3 and Compass through this process. So thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Alan, and the members of Compass and AI3 for joining us tonight. I know many of you tomorrow in the visioning workshop, and we look forward to continuing this important work. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it.
Okay, so moving right along to our next appearance, Segal Rees is joining us again. I believe I saw her sign on. Hi, Segal. Like the boxes are popping up as people are leaving and coming, but I thought I saw your name. So thank you for joining us again to provide another health update for us this evening.
Great, thank you, and thanks for having me. Good evening, everybody. It's getting to be our routine now. So I'll jump right in. I think it's good to always start our conversations looking at the data. So I have our typical slides here. I gotta get the hang of this by now. There we go. Okay, so in the last report, so this report will actually be published tomorrow evening, the state report. It'll be encompassing of the dates of November 29th to December 12th. We did see a significant increase in our case numbers for this two-week period. As a comparison, last week we had about 167, and this week you see we have 262. So that's obviously 100 more cases in a two-week period. And you consider to see the incline in the graph also, that's using the rate per 100,000 of our average daily case count per 100,000, that it was a pretty drastic increase. So definitely saw, and we are thinking, like we've heard in the news and everywhere, that this is a result of not only, you know, an expected surge of the second surge in the pandemic, but also because of Thanksgiving gatherings and travel. And just anecdotally, through our contact tracing, we are hearing that when we talk to people. And also, I do indicate on the little dots what NOR is designated as, based on the color coding. And as a reminder, back in October, percent positive was not included. And then they added percent positive into the metric, which placed us in yellow for quite a long time. And then last week, we did, with our percent positive being just over 5%, triggered us into the red category. I don't have the percent positive, that's not data I have access to until the state publishes it. But I am assuming that it'll be above 5%, so we will again, you know, be designated in this red higher-risk community, which, to be honest, most, a lot of communities transitioned last week, and I expect even more to transition this week as we see increases really across the state. And then just to break it down a little further, the average age is still pretty young at 40. But as, you know, in the last couple appearances here, I've indicated the range is very large. We had, you know, everything from a two-month-old to an 89-year-old. But I think what's a good sign here is that if we look in our 70-plus, and really even the 60, that those numbers are less than the other groups. So I think that's when we look at most of the adults. So I think that's a good sign because we know that is really the high-risk population that we want to really protect and not allow the virus to spread to those populations. So and that's maybe one shining light in this week's report that we are seeing, we are not seeing older age cases. Of those 262, well, not of those, we saw 31 because some of that 31 could be non-NOR residents because we do include staff in that number. So there were 31 cases that were affecting the schools, either students or staff. We continue to not see in-school transmission. Six of those 31 cases did have close contacts identifying in the schools, but at this point, just like the last report, none of those close contacts as of today have tested positive. We do have obviously people in quarantine at this moment that we don't know their status. You know, we don't know that they are completely out of the woods. Before we get into the bulk of the conversation, I just want to quickly touch base on vaccine because I feel like the light at the end of the tunnel. I think we've all heard in the news that they have started to administer vaccine to that first bullet point in phase one, the clinical and non-clinical healthcare workers that have direct COVID-facing care. So that's great, and we will continue to move through those. Those are actually listed in order within the phases. So we will move on to long-term care, public safety, congregate cares, home-based healthcare workers, and other healthcare workers that aren't doing COVID-facing work. And then hopefully, you know, not too far along, February, March, we'll be moving into phase two. Just want to note, the second bullet in phase two is education, and that they will be pretty high on the list in phase two. So I think that's welcome news for everybody. And then hopefully by the summer, we're finishing up everybody's second doses. I think this is an ambitious timeline. And I know we all want to see this as quick as possible, you know, but hopefully by summer, we're working on getting people their second doses and we're, you know, on the tail end of this pandemic. I think this is where we wanted, I wanted to go over some more recent changes. I think every time we schedule these meetings, I think I'm just going to go over the data and then some more big news drops. And this is the big one this time. Really big changes to the quarantine guidance. We call it the 7-10-14 rule now. If you remember, we've always said quarantine is 14 days. You can't test out of quarantine. It's very simple. That's what it is. Well, it's become very complex now. And I'm going to go over the sort of the two aspects that have changed. The first one being that the antigen test is now also a valid test to qualify for some of these other lengths of quarantine. So that's a big change. So it's the PCR, which is the molecular test that actually looks for the DNA of the virus, and then the antigen test, which looks for proteins from the virus. And that the antigen is that rapid test that has a pretty quick turnaround, so you can get those results quickly. So we like to phrase this conversation in that, you know, quarantine is still 14 days. You still have to monitor your symptoms regardless of when you can sort of be released from this strict quarantine of where you have to actually literally stay in your home for those 14 days. You can only go out to get tested. You can be released from that on day eight or day 11. So let's look at the first one. So seven days of strict quarantine is sort of your first option. If you get a test, either a PCR or an antigen test on day five or later, and you have no symptoms, and you agree to actively monitor your symptoms until day 14, you can be released on day eight. If you decide not to get a test, so the individual, again, not getting a test but does not have any symptoms, agrees to monitor their symptoms for the full 14 days, you can be released on day 11. So you do 10 days of quarantine, released on day 11. And then there's the 14-day quarantine, which we're all used to, and that's if anybody exhibits any symptoms. So even if they test negative, but they have symptoms, they need to complete the full 14-day quarantine. So the question is, why are we doing this? Oh, before I get into that, I just want to note the residual risk, the last column on the right there. So we always talk about, any of these measures are really to reduce the probability and the chance of spread. And we're always balancing the community impact, the risk-benefit analysis of any decision we make. And quarantine is exactly the same thing. So what the idea is that approximately 95% of people will not spread the virus if they follow the strict seven-day quarantine released on day eight with the negative test. So we'll catch 95% of the spread if people are really compliant with that. And that sort of gets to the reasoning behind this. A 14-day strict quarantine is very difficult for people to do. And we know that, you know, compliance is an issue out there. So the idea is with fewer days of quarantine, you can still get a pretty high level of protection. We're talking about sort of 95%. And we're more likely to get compliance if we tell somebody, you know, seven days of strictly staying in your house, you could just go out to get your test, and then you can be released on day eight. You know, not only with essential workers, it can be very advantageous, but also just with the general public getting better compliance with quarantine, with a shorter quarantine, and still getting 95%, you know, reduction of spread if people are compliant. Versus, you know, I think that the discussion is really around, if you have a strict 14-day quarantine, are people really being compliant with that for the full 14 days anyway? And are they just leaving on day four, five, and six when they might be actually coming down with a virus and in their infectious period, might be out into the community? So the idea is, you know, you could get better compliance with a shorter quarantine. Now, I don't know if you want me to leave this up because I know we're going to have a lot of questions about this.
Yeah, maybe we could leave it up, Segal.
Okay.
At least to get us started. Maya, did you have a question?
Well, I just wanted to clarify that Segal is presenting information about the formal Department of Public Health quarantine, but return to school is a separate issue, very related, but return to school is not necessarily the same as quarantine.
Right, and I think that's, you know, that's what we want to discuss. As a public health department, and, you know, we follow this guidance with all our cases. And that, like I said, that's a recent change of how we've been doing contact tracing.
Yeah. So I think that's a really important point, you know, Maya, about the return to school because currently, what we have discussed up until tonight and all the documentation, if you go to our school website, or if you have been in contact with one of the school nurses or the forms that the NOR Public Schools says home, we have required a PCR test. So at this time, the public schools have not accepted an antigen test as a way to test out of quarantine. But what Segal is sharing with us now is that the Massachusetts Department of Public Health has adopted the CDC guidance, but I think the CDC updated their guidance middle of November, Segal? Is that right? Middle to end of November?
There was a transition period because honestly, the Department of Public Health came up with an amended guidance, and then a week later, CDC came up with an amended guidance. So there was a lot of confusion on which guidance we should follow. And I think we finally landed on the state adopting the CDC guidance, which is what I just presented. And I think a little difference in what you said, the previous guidance was 14-day quarantine, no matter what. You can't test out of it even if you get a negative test. For 14 days. So now there's an option to shorten your quarantine with a negative test and all those other caveats that I went on to. And I'd say shorten the quarantine. It's still, we still like to say it's that 14 days because you still need to agree to monitor the symptoms. A lot of this depends on people's willingness to be cooperative. So if somebody agrees to monitor, if someone says, you know, I can't or I can't access the test, well, then they fall into those, you know, those other rows, whether they do the no-test option or the full 14-days strict quarantine.
And what I think is helpful for the community to know, who might be following this conversation, as well as the committee to know, this is the guidance from the MADPH that Segal is sharing, and that Segal follows as a board of health. But once again, in this experience, the guidelines and recommendations that the schools are getting from DUCI are not in alignment with the Massachusetts DPH. So as of today, December 16th, DUCI is still saying in all of their published guidance that you can test out of quarantine now if you test negative on day eight or after and return on day 10, be released on day 10. But DUCI is saying you can only test out by PCR test. They have not yet changed their guidance or issued anything to public schools on accepting the antigen test. And DUCI just had a board meeting yesterday, and during that board meeting, Commissioner Riley presented what I just said to his board and didn't make any indication of if or when they would be changing their guidance to adhere to and align with what Segal is presenting tonight. So just once again, we're in a situation where different state agencies are telling us to do different things.
Doesn't DUCI and the Department of Public Health report to the same guy? Can we get some coordination here? Just curious.
Ideally, collaboration would be wonderful.
The answer we've gotten on our calls is that they're working on updating their guidance to align with the DPH guidance. But like Teresa said, it has not happened yet. like Teresa said, it has not happened yet.
Yeah. Maya?
Oh, I just, I was going to say that I think that, um, you know, obviously I am not a public health expert and I don't really know about um, the risk to a shorter quarantine, but but one thing that seems advantageous to me about this new system is it is encouraging people to get tested. Um, because before, if people were asymptomatic, there was kind of no benefit to them to getting tested. And um, because they were still stuck in a fourteen-day quarantine. And if they did get tested and tested positive, then there was sort of, you know, potentially a risk that now they were going to have to like have more of their, you know, their contacts contacted and quarantined and all that kind of stuff. So you could see how there was the old strict fourteen-day no-test-out-of-it thing was kind of a disincentive to the asymptomatic people testing. So I do think that this is, I I can see an advantage to this.
I I think that's a great point. Um, sometimes we would have cases get out before their um close contacts get out because you're in isolation if you don't have symptoms, or you have very mild symptoms that only lasted a day or two, you're in isolation for ten days. Where, you know, if you're close contact and you're exposed to the virus, you're in quarantine for fourteen days. Um, so I think that's a great point. It does definitely motivate people to get tested if they could be released on day eight.
Other questions or comments from the committee on these changes that Segal is presenting to us tonight?
All right.
Joan?
So like the million-dollar question, uh, do you have any differences of opinions or recommendations for the schools, given that the environment there, you know the environment there, right? It's classrooms, it's kids sitting five to six feet apart with masks. Um, do you have any recommendations regarding whether or not we should be looking at um, the return-to-school quarantine, return-to-school policies?
I think we've definitely shown that the schools can do a great job with keeping people separated, keeping the mask-wearing, all those safety precautions um are working because we haven't seen the spread in the schools. Um, I think the the problem here is um the how difficult communications are going to be because we're going to be releasing people from their official quarantine on day eight or day eleven. Yet, they might not be able to return to school. And this is something we've dealt in other environments too, with other businesses, um, and other institutions where they institute their own rules that are different than the general public health um guidelines and protocols. And it gets very confusing and people get very irritated, understandably. Because we'll say, yep, you're free to go, you know, you're out of quarantine, and then whatever institution they work for says, nope, we want to see a negative test, or nope, we want you to stay out for ten days instead of eight days. So I understand the, you know, the the want to make it as strict as possible. Um, but also, I think it adds a very big layer of communication difficulty and confusion for the public if um everybody's using different standards.
Dr. Thompson, what are your thoughts and recommendations on the situation?
Yeah, and you know, you know, obviously, the, you know, the when the, you know, the the Department of Public Health has got, is worried just about public health, where, you know, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has got health and transportation and education and time on learning and 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 finance and grants. And so there's a little bit more of a a monster to move, if you will. Um, whoever the DESE guidance is, still the PCR test, not the antigen test. Um, I have, and you know, Segal can tell me I'm absolutely wrong because I'm still working on my master's in public health. They don't have it yet. That's our running joke. Um, but, you know, we're dealing with young people for the most part, who don't necessarily always show symptoms. Um, and having a less reliable test in that instance concerns me, which is why I think DESE has not moved off of the PCR test. Um, I definitely hear the, you know, it would be good to move people off fourteen days after doing twenty-one. Personally, um, I can, I can relate to a a long quarantine. Uh, you know, fourteen was fine, you know, those extra seven was a little more difficult, but um, you know, I can see, you know, the, you know, the PCR test and and the going with the, you know, the DUCI recommendation currently of 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 ten days, at least. Starting that process, there's obviously other people we need to talk to and other forms we need to change and all that sort of thing. It will not be, we probably will not be able to implement it between now and the break, uh, but at least put us in a position where we're moving in that direction. Um, you know, that ten-day quarantine coming out if there's a negative PCR test um, would be a good middle of the road, and it would align us with the DESE, and then we can look further and see if there's more guidance coming um soon thereafter. So um, obviously, you know, again, there's a lot of conversations, but, you know, right currently, if there's a staff member who's exposed, they are quarantined for fourteen days. Um, and that is becoming a staffing challenge in our current numbers scenario. So those are my thoughts on that.
Joan, did you have a follow-up?
I do. Um, can you, Segal, can you talk a little bit about why the change has been made to um allow the antigen tests? Like previously, right, it was air across-the-board PCR, and now it's this change in guidance. Has something shifted in the accuracy of the antigen test? Like, why that change, if you know?
Yeah, yeah. Um, the state actually shared a lot of the research that the state's been doing on it. Um, I think like everything through the pandemic, we've just been learning more about the virus. And the antigen test has been proven to be more reliable than we thought. Um, so there there is some pretty good data um that the state has done, like I said, actually their own testing on it. Um, that it's showing that it's pretty specific, um, that it not only uh gets people, it's it's better at getting people that have it um than we originally thought at at comparing to the PCR. PCR is still going to be the gold standard, and we still, you know, we encourage physicians to get both. We have had instances, um, I can think of maybe one where we had someone um antigen positive and then their PCR came back negative. But, you know, when we see an antigen positive, it's most likely um, it's less likely to, you know, that that's the side you want to err on, right? That it's positive and then you revoke it later if the PCR is negative. Um, but we, I don't think we've ever seen an antigen positive where we get, I'm sorry, an antigen negative and then a PCR positive. That's very rare.
And just from my understanding again, because I am not working on my NPH, I'm letting NPHs handle that. Um, um, the antigen test, so there's there's multiple types of tests, right? There's the PCR test, there's an antigen test, and then there's like the Costco version spit test, right? Like, an antigen test is not the at-home Costco version spit test, or is it?
No, I'm not sure what the Costco version is.
So if you go to the Costco website for a little while, they were selling at-home like swab-your-mouth type test. Okay, so no, so an antigen test is at your doctor's office type of thing? Like, can you just talk a little bit about the antigen test?
Yeah, so um the antigen test, they they can, they're both can be nasal swabs, they can be taken in a different way, they can be saliva, but we are talking about a test in a physician's office and and done by a lab. Um, it it's, a lot of it is the Binex-Now, which is the ones that um that they they've offered to schools. I think that's a whole different animal, but um, and and the research has been on the Binex-Now test. That's shown that it that it is pretty accurate.
Segal, the research study that you had shared with me, I did share it with the school committee, and that um is the one that the state did, right? The the state did. So there's a couple of questions, and um maybe there's no good answer here. Uh, but that really focused on one specific antigen test. It didn't look at like every brand out there, and and my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that not all of them are as accurate as the one that they focused on. Is that correct?
Yeah, they focused on the Binex-Now.
Yeah, and also tell me if I'm wrong, but the the Binex-Now is most accurate, less likely to be a false negative if you're symptomatic. But if you're asymptomatic, there's a shorter window of where it can accurately detect the virus. Is that correct?
Correct. It is much better if you are symptomatic.
So I think going back to one of the points Dr. Thompson raised that we're just all trying to, you know, think through, we we know in this virus so far that children are more likely to be asymptomatic if they have it than adults. So are we just, you know, as we are trying to reconcile all this, are we potentially bringing youth back into schools who tested negative because they were asymptomatic on the antigen, but if they had the PCR, would have been positive?
Yep. You cut out the for a little bit, and I think it's my computer, but I think I I got you, that the the children are asymptomatic and might have a higher rate. Um, they did look at children in the study. Um, yes, a different amount of kids, they did children and adult in it.
Yeah.
Um, but I mean, yeah, I I hear the concern. And I think one thing also with the schools is that um unlike community cases, um, it's, we we know we get compliance. So we know it can protect the school. So when someone's out on quarantine, you know, whether it's eight, you know, seven, ten, or fourteen, we know they are not coming in the school because we enforce that. So that's a big difference than in community cases where we really don't have eyes on the cases like that.
Right. Are there other questions or feedback from the committee at this time? I feel like we do have to provide some guidance to Dr. Thompson and his staff, at least to get us through the the holiday break. Um, and it's tricky because again, DUCI and and DPH are telling us two different things. But just as a reminder, again, what currently is stated on our district website and in all of our reopening plans and COVID documents and forms is that fourteen-day quarantine, and that the only test result we were accepting was from a PCR, not an antigen.
In fact, just add one one thing, uh, Madam Chair, we we also uh made it very clear from the beginning that we would follow the stricter standards um when we were presented with these things. And if we're looking at the NPH standard and the DUCI standard right now, the DUCI standard is the stricter standard.
And I know you touched on it, Dr. Thompson, that we do have to engage other stakeholders, um, because this this does impact our our MOU with the teachers' union, which both Dr. Thompson and I have already been in contact with Jody Smith, the president of the union, um, to begin talking about this. And um, we've been working closely with Segal and Stacy Lane from the Department of Health as well. Um, Dr. Thompson, what what is your request of the committee at this time?
Uh, I, if if, you know, if if the committee so chooses to give me a a direction, I my recommendation would be at this point, um, while we sort out this, you know, the antigen and and wait for the DESE to give us some sort of indication on what they're recommended recommending, looking at the school environment, looking at the population we're serving, youth who are, who have a greater tendency to be asymptomatic that we and the fact that we have said from the get-go that we were going to follow the stricter standards and all of our safety protocols right now, that is the DESE, which is the PCR test. And if they test, they could negatively, they could come back after ten days. Of course, that would still, implementing that would be an another piece. I don't know if we would be able to do that between now and the break, but um at least we have a direction to move in between now and our next meeting.
Dave, Tanya?
So I think that all these new and different opinions on different standards is quite confusing, and I'm still not sold on the new standards. I have not even heard enough about it until pretty much this afternoon. So, you know, I I, you know, me, I'm a very cautious person. I worry about the safety of our often elderly staff, asymptomatic people, you know, it's it's problematic. So, you know, we are not the general community. We are not, you know, I I almost want to make a motion that we follow DUCI, follow the PCR test, and continue that rather than trying to change how we're going about this, you know, to save shave off a couple of days. Um, so Madam Chair, can I make a motion of that effect? Or are we still discussing things?
No, go ahead. You can make a motion, Dave.
Okay, so I make a motion that we still continue to follow DUCI guidelines with the PCR and test uh and the fourteen-day quarantine for anyone that uh may be in the, have the possibility of con- contracting COVID-nineteen. Um,
So just
Continue what we're doing.
Yeah, so just to clarify, what we're doing and what DUCI says are slightly different.
Okay, sorry.
No, no, it's okay. It's very confusing, and I spent most of today talking
Three different things.
So what we currently say is that you can't test out of quarantine. What DUCI is saying is that if you test negative via a PCR on day eight or after, you can be released from quarantine on day ten. So we could say that that is what we're saying for return to school. If you test negative PCR day eight or after, the Department of Health releases you on day ten, you can return to school. Is that what you would like to make a motion on?
I think that seems like a good idea, but I don't know how we would implement it, you know, because it's it's quite confusing to send out an update like that, you know? Um, I I'd like to make a motion to continue the PCR as the gold standard for the test, but beyond that, I can't speak to it.
Okay. Maybe we separate, yeah, Segal, help us.
No, no, I, well, what I wanted to say was, um, DUCI right now, remember I said that DPH changed the standard and then CDC came out with this version? The what you just quoted was what DPH came out before. So I think that's DUCI's first version of changing it, and then it changed again, and DUCI hasn't updated it.
Okay.
Um, but I I I understand, um, we need to fol- you guys need to follow what DUCI recommends, and we need to follow what DPH recommends, and there's the inherent conflict right now.
Yeah.
Um, and I think it comes down to communications, right? You know, the school can enforce different standards um that we do with the general public, and it's just going to be communicating with those school cases from both sides, what the difference is.
Segal, can I ask you from like a logistical management communication perspective? Um, if we do decide this, that return to school is following a different set of guidelines right now than the um release from quarantine, is that something that your staff can help us communicate so that when they are contacting families uh in our district, that they know that we're looking for the PCR test?
I think it represents honestly a challenge for my staff. We would probably say you are released from our quarantine, and you should probably talk to the schools, but when you can return, you can say something like that. I don't think we would get into enforcing different quarantines for different people. To be honest, it would be just too confusing for us.
Hmm.
Okay, but then it could be on our and Dr. Thompson where we really reiterate that for right now, that return to school is still contingent upon the PCR result.
Right, and 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 again, I don't see us being able to change our current position probably between now and then the break, although we will, you know, if the committee decides that's the direction we should approach, that um, you know, we'll work on that, but we only have four days before the, before we break for the for the December break, so.
Yeah, Maya, and then back to Dave.
Um, I feel like in some ways, this whole conversation is premature. I think Dr. Thompson is absolutely right. We can't make a change in the next four days. We have collective bargaining agreements that um have provisions around this. We can't change that. So I don't think there's any way that we can, that I I don't think it would be responsible uh for us to change anything that we're currently doing in the schools right now in terms of return to school right at the moment. However, given that DUCI has changed, I know DUCI's standard is still different from Massachusetts Department of Public Health, but they have both changed their standards recently. And so I think it makes sense at this point to engage with the stakeholders and have a conversation about what we want this policy to look like starting in January. But I don't know that, like, I even if we vote, I I I think if we voted to change something right now, we might be in violation of an agreement. I I don't know that we even have the authority to do that.
Yeah, it's definitely complicated. Um, so if we, between now and next Wednesday, which is really Friday, Monday, and Tuesday, that students as of now will physically be in school, we are staying with what is currently on our website, on our forms, and what we have published previously, which is a fourteen-day quarantine if you are identified as a close contact and you're asymptomatic. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see being able to wrap. I I I don't see us being able to change that and have those conversations between now and next Wednesday.
Is everybody comfortable with that at this time? And then we have a lot of work to do with stakeholders um and researching. Joan?
Yeah, it's not that I'm uncomfortable with that. Um, the four-day, like, I get, logistically, that's kind of impossible. Um, what I would like to toss out there is that I think we should be considering what we should be doing moving forward, and I'm not sure if this, Maya, is what you were talking about in terms of MOU contracts and stuff like that. Um, but I do just want to point out that while DUCI has had multiple standards that we have decided um that were not applicable to us um and to our situation, we have always consistently followed the Department of Public Health. So as we go into these types of things, um, I don't want us to slip into the role of questioning the public health advice. Um, you you know what I'm saying? Like, I just want to make sure that we're, because this conversation could very easily slip into second-guessing public health advice, and that is not a role that I want to be in, so.
Um, yeah.
I just want to make sure that we're all cognizant of that, but I understand the logistical challenges between now and the end of the um year, the end of the year, before the end of two thousand twenty. Yeah.
No, that's a very valid point, Joan, and I will just say personally, um, No, that's a very valid point, Joan. And I will just say personally, um, and I will be writing an email later tonight, as soon as we're done with this meeting, actually, to express to Commissioner Riley and Governor Baker and the Chair of DESI, how frustrating and infuriating it continues to be that this is the position they place municipalities and local public of health and local school committees in, because this isn't professional and this is not how it should be done. Um, Maya?
So I guess I'm going back to my que- to a question, like, um, we had said before we would, as Dr. Thompson said, we, that we would follow the stricter of the guidance from DESI or the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. So the question is, can we allow students to get a PCR test? The, 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 at this point, the stricter one is DESI. So can we allow students to get, uh, you know, a PCR test and then return on day 10 or 11, whichever the rule is? Um, or it, do we actually, do we believe that we have to stay with the, the 14 day and no testing out?
Dr. Thompson, what is your thoughts on that?
I mean, I, I would, you know, I mean, if, I mean, if you look back, I don't know if Segal can put that thing back up there, but you know, with the, with the 10 day piece that they're talking about, they're talking about a 1% chance. So that's, that's pretty slim. And if you put the, you know, the PCR test, which is what we're still um, using it, you know, um, and I quite honestly would, would advocate to continue to use. I mean, I would guess that that would probably even be less than one. Um, which is higher, higher odds in crossing the street, to be honest with you. So, um, you know, that would be where, where I'm kind of sitting at this point in time. And, you know, part of it is, you know, again, you know, the challenge in this pandemic is that, you know, we are constantly doing research, constantly learning more about a virus we you know, a year ago knew nothing about, really. Um, so there's been a lot of learning in the last year, 11 months, um, on this situation. And it is constantly, the new knowledge is constantly coming out. Um, you know, and I realized that the, you know, the, um, antigen test is, is better than it was in the beginning. I, you know, and again, I don't have my NPH yet, uh, but, you know, I, I worry about asymptomatic adolescents and young children, uh, and how that works with that test. I think that we might be a little premature with that study. And normally in science, you have many studies and many conversations. And a lot of the science rolling out seems to be as a scientist, uh, a little rushed compared to the normal checks and balances of, of scientific inquiry and, and publishing results from scientific. So it's kind of one of those things when you find a study that kind of meets where you want to go, it quickly comes out. Um, and that first line there with the antigen test and the seven days, I, I kind of lean that that looks a little bit like that assumption might be a little faster than um, some others. So, um, but it's also hard having multiple sets of experts talking at the same time. CDC, NPH, you know, it's, uh, alphabet soup time. But it, it would be, you know, if we could, you know, and again, we have, we have work to do even besides this conversation. But if we could, you know, go with the gold standard test, you know, and be able to follow at least part of that, that stricter quarantine at this point, while we wait to get more information, that would be at least a direction to have a conversation about.
So, Gals, I could just ask you, um, you had a board of health meeting yesterday, correct?
Yes.
Did that, did this come up at all with your board members?
Yes, we presented it that these were the changes that were implementing.
Was there any discussion around school specific or, or no, just more community wide?
Yeah, it was focused on community wide cases.
Okay. So I think what I'm hearing, Dr. Thompson, correct me if I'm wrong, um, is that you at least would like the committee to approve for right now, staying with the standard of the PCR being required to return to school?
Yes.
Um, and Dave, Tanya, you started to make a motion. Would you like that to be your motion?
That is what I'd like to amend my motion to, correct. My confusion that we had different standards. But no, I, my motion is to continue what we have now, because like Mya said, it'd be premature to talk to, to do this without talking to our sta- other, our other stakeholders. So my motion is to keep this the way it is for now.
Requiring the PCR test to return to school?
Correct.
Is there a second, uh, Segal?
I, I, I think we're making the same mistake again. What you're doing is you're, you're taking the current DESI guidance, which is different than what we were doing before. So it was a 14 day quarantine.
I'm, I'm taking what we have in as our policy right now. So we're not changing anything.
That means no test, 14 day, strict 14 day quarantine, whether you test negative or not.
So in our, so maybe I'm confused now, which I apologize. I had all this straight. In our documents on our website, when we refer that it's only the PCR test that we will accept, is that in other situations, like if you're symptomatic, but you aren't a known contact?
Or travel or things like that. Yes.
Okay, then I apologize. So what is the current Massachusetts DPH guidance on that, Segal? If you're symptomatic, I, I know the travel order hasn't changed. And I know they're still saying 100% PCR, not the antigen. But when I suddenly have symptoms of COVID, I have no known contacts. I go to the doctor, they decide to test me with an antigen. Is that antigen test enough to get me back in school or return to work in school? Because right now our documents say no. Right now, our documents say it has to be a PCR.
Correct. So you are not a close contact. You're just somebody, you got the sniffles, you went to the doctor, you got an antigen test. We consider, if you're negative, y- you're negative, just like a PCR negative, and you can, once your symptoms are done, because we don't anybody, want anybody to go anywhere if they have the sniffles, um, you can return to school or work. If you're antigen positive, you become a probable case and we treat that like a case and hopefully get it confirmed with the PCR a couple of days later.
Okay.
So if the PCR is negative.
So the Mass DPH has not changed any of that? That has remained the same?
Correct it. Yeah. I mean, a while ago, the antigen became treated like a case. That was, that was a while ago, though.
Okay.
I think we should just focus it on, these are quarantine cases. So these are people, because all that is a whole different conversation. I don't want to confuse it. This is only people that have had known exposure and are placed into a quarantine by under order from public health. That's all we're talking about. So these are people with known exposure. Right now, what we've always said, and it's awful, Stacy and I have said it from the beginning, you never can test out of quarantine. It's 14 days. Now you can. Um, so all our, all our documents and on the town side too, it says a strict 14 day quarantine.
Okay.
Now there is an option to test out. And the state says you can have antigen or PCR.
Okay. So I, I, so I guess first order of business between now and the break is are we staying with that, that you cannot test out of quarantine?
Yes.
So is somebody like to make the motion that we're staying consistent with that and cannot test out of quarantine?
I'm going to amend my motion for, I think, the third or fourth time now. So it is the current policy that we have of 14 day quarantine and you cannot test out of it.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion? I'll second it for discussion, further discussion on it. Joan?
Again, this comes back to my comment about not wanting to second guess public health. I am, I do not have the skill or expertise to, um, well, I probably have the skill, but I shouldn't. And I don't have the expertise to question, um, what public health guidance is. Um, and I think that when we start going the way of not listening to our scientists, bad things go that way. So.
Well, I just want to clarify, though, that if we vote anything different than that.
So I understand that there are other considerations here, but if we're, if we're taking a motion on what we believe we should be doing, that's very different than tabling the conversation until we engage with stakeholders who have, um, stakes in it. Um, if we have agreements and MOUs and stuff like that, we should not be taking a vote on a policy. That's, that's my personal feeling, because I will feel that I have to vote against it, because I will not second guess public health advice.
Okay, I understand.
Segal can stand there and tell me no, M- Mass DPH is crap, um, and we shouldn't be listening to them. Um, I'm not going to vote for something that goes, again, they're updated, they got it.
If, Joan, if I, if I can interject, so I'm not against Mass DPH. I'm just saying that until we talk to our stakeholders, MOUs, et cetera, we can't change what we have. I mean, we can talk about it some more, but right now, like tonight, until we talk to the people that are involved that have agreements with us, we can't go changing the test out of quarantine. That's, that's what my motion is. I'm not trying to criticize the Department of Health at all.
If, if you amend your motion to include that until we can talk to stakeholders, I'm happy to second that.
That, that is fifth amendment to it. Correct. I thought it was understood. My apologies.
Um, Emery and then Maya.
I guess, I guess if we're leaving it the same, why are we voting on a motion? If we're not going to change anything with, what, what is the motion really doing? Because we're, we're just leaving, we, we already know that we probably need to talk to other stakeholders about this before we make any changes. So I don't understand why we need to vote on anything at all. We're, we're not making a change.
Yeah. It, it, yes, fellow question, the way we could approach it. I just know that, um, our school staff has been receiving questions and complaints in the last 48 hours over this. So some direction from the school committee, I think, does need to happen tonight for Dr. Thompson and the staff.
And I, and I think it's, I, I don't know if that, you know, suffices explaining our position and why we haven't voted to change it. But I just, I just, you know, disagree that we need to take a vote at all. There's no change at all. And perhaps a, you know, um, uh, it's some kind of communication from the school committee around what our actual position is and why it is that way until we can change it would be more appropriate.
Okay. Maya?
So I feel like there's two issues here. One is, will the PCR test be required if, you know, for, that's one thing, like the PCR versus antigen thing. But then the, and we have, the schools have said, you know, that we accept, only accept the PCR test and that would be something, it would be, you know, something we would have to discuss changing and there'd be multiple stakeholders to discuss it. But then the separate, separate question is quarantine. And the schools have never instituted quarantine. That's the role of the Board of Health and the Department of Public Health. And if they are releasing people from quarantine based on their guidelines, I don't know that we can, like, you know, like enforce a different quarantine. So I think I'm talking myself in circles too, but I'm just, I don't know that there's, you know, we never, I don't know that there's anything in our policies or our procedures that we ever said, like, we have a quarantine that's different from the Board of Public, uh, Board of Health.
No, but I, I think, Segal, tell me if I'm wrong. All the documents that we worked on really, really hard in August and September that we thought were going to get us through this pandemic and the flow chart that you created, it all said 14 day quarantine.
And if we think back to when we developed them, we did that specifically because when the DESI guidance first came out, or DESE, and it did not match DPH guidance, which gave a strict 14 day quarantine. Remember, they did have a test out option that no public health official agreed with at that time. Um, and that's when DESI and DPH, again, were not in agreement. DESI ended up correcting their documents and following the DPH and CDC guidance at that point to give a strict 14 day quarantine. Ironically, now, DPH is saying there is a test out option with certain criteria that we went over. And now DESI has to update their documents. So all our documents did say 14 days.
Yeah. And I, and I did send out the documentation to our attorney and she did say that if we change anything other than what we're currently doing, all the documentation has to be changed. And I, I'm happy to send it out to anybody who wants it. There's, um, five different documents on the school website that reference this. Maya?
But just, I, I don't know that the school, I don't remember that the school committee actually voted on those documents. I think we, we certainly saw them. We had some feedback on them, but I don't feel like those are like formal documents. I think if, if the standards have changed, then I don't know that the school committee needs to vote to change those documents.
So we did vote on the reopening plan.
Yes.
And this is in there.
Okay.
And the other documents reference it as policy. So even though it's not in our policy manual, it is stated as the strict policy. And then that puts it back in the school committee hands.
Okay.
A nightmare? Yes, it's a nightmare. Um, I, I, I don't know. Um, I, I feel like we, we need to decide something and, and move on, because we do have a lot of other things on our agenda and other appearances. Um, not trying to rush us, but I don't know what we should do. Um, here. Joan?
I, I'm not trying to rush us either, but I do think that this part of what we're talking about here and talking around is that there are our stakeholders, our implications with MOUs and those types of things. I don't know if what I'm even going to suggest is possible. Is it possible for us to adjourn into an executive session for like 15 minutes to hash the contract stuff out and then come back?
Well, um, I mean, we can go into executive session.
I don't know if that's the right idea. I'm just trying to navigate a way through this.
Dr. Thompson?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, you still have to go to a bargaining table and, and, and discuss things. So, you know, I mean, we can discuss strategy, but I'm not sure. I mean, the one, the one thing this cool, school committee could confirm is that, you know, we're going to stick with the PCR test. That would be, you know, what, what we have said before and have put into our, uh, forums and leave.
Joan?
So that's actually not the question I'm asking. So I guess what I'm getting at here then is we have the right as a school committee to change policy. And then if we change policy and if that hypothetically impacts other things, those things would then just need to be impact bargained. So to me, I guess we could make that change. We keep talking around things because we have stakeholders who, um, I don't think we have agreement on, on what, I'm going to stop talking now. I've, I've made the recommendation that this is probably executive session fodder. Um, and so if it's important that we have a decision tonight, then I suggest that we figure out a way to do executive session either in the middle of this meeting or after this meeting, and then come back to report on what our, come back to the policy discussion. But that does seem to be some of the hang up here. And somebody, please correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm not.
No, you can.
Clearly understanding what's not being said.
I mean, you can, you can decide to break into executive session at any point. I mean, it's, it is on the agenda. It is a, you know, a contract type thing, but.
If, if we decide to table us, and so inaction means nothing changes, right? And if nothing changes until we have time to do all the research and everything we're saying we need to do, Segal, where are we? Um, in terms of all the documentation and, and from your perspective?
Um, I, I just think we're right, right where we are. Um, it's just going to be a matter of communicating with staff and families. The difference in the, in existing policies right now. The schools are still enforcing a 14 day quarantine.
Yeah. Is that possible to do for one more week before we break for school? Break, break for the holiday, I mean?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, for your, for staff. I'm sorry. I'm like looking at you, but obviously you don't know that I'm looking at you.
I, I honestly, I think it's on your staff. Um, we will be following this guidance. I, I know it's not ideal, but we can't, we can't institute different quarantines for different populations. Everybody's going to get the same thing from us. It's whether your staff is going to have that additional conversation to explain this is the school role. I understand public health released you, but.
Okay. So Dr. Thompson, for one more week, is it possible? And again, this is like Friday, Monday and Tuesday, because tomorrow is a remote day for everybody.
Right.
Wednesday is the typical remote day. Is it possible for the school staff to do this additional layer of communication to get us through the break and give us more time to do everything we need to do?
Yes, it does impact, uh, it would impact high school sports if they were going beyond those days. But, but yeah, I mean, I don't think we can have all those conversations and come back to the, you know, between now and Wednesday midday anyways, but it is, it is going to be early. And, you know, honestly, it's pretty amazing. We've gotten to the middle of January, um, January, middle of December, I don't even know what month it is. Uh, and, and, and this is the first time we have not been totally in sync with. Uh, and, and, and this is the first time we have not been totally in sync with our, uh, with our health department. So that's actually a win, uh, in general. Thank you, Segal. But, you know, it isn't, it isn't even our fault. I mean, it's guidance coming out that, you know, we have not gotten other guidance or even had a ti- chance to even digest yet. Um, so, but.
Dr. Thompson, since you mentioned athletics, I know Dr. Galligan and Mr. Longley are on with us, um, to talk about athletic, athletics broader, but maybe they can, can join at this time and, and we can have Segal's perspective on some things too. Are, are people comfortable if we add Dr. Galligan and Mr. Longley at this time? Yeah. Um, so if Dr. Galligan and Mr. Longley, he wouldn't mind joining us. Um, but Joan, did you have a question before we?
I just want to point out that we're saying that it's only a week, but if this is a school committee policy about quarantine, sorry that I'm being a pain, that means that it can't actually change until our next school committee meeting unless we all come together.
I, I was going to point out that our next meeting is not until January 13th, but I don't think we're going to make it that long. I was just going to wait a while until I told you that. So this is.
Want to point out that it's not just the next four days. We're actually making a decision that actually carries us into the middle of January.
Right. So Dr. Thompson, you mentioned that, you know, decision, um, if we, if we say no change and we don't release students from quarantine as per the Department of Public Health is now saying we can, that can have an impact on athletics. So would you or Mr. Longley or Dr. Galligan, uh, share more about why it'll impact, impact athletics?
Well, I, yeah, I, I, I'm just going to inject. I mean, it's going to be hard for them to, because we don't really share who's out for what, but, you know, I don't want, I mean, they're kind of a difficult spot. So, but I'm going, they could probably talk in generalities of, of how it might impact, but.
And I think, you know, in the near future, an, an important note is that we'd be coming into a time where student athletes are practicing and participating, but school is on vacation. Hence the communication that would be going to people about, um, quarantines or COVID-related issues are going to be coming from the Board of Health primarily and only really, and then relayed to us, but our staff, our nursing staff is not working during that time. So, you know, there's going to be a period of time where that, where that could potentially be an issue.
Thank you, Dr. Galligan. Uh, Maya, did you have a question?
Oh, I just wanted to state that, you know, I understand, um, that Dr. Thompson and Dr. Galligan have, um, you know, certainly shouldn't be sharing private information, but I think I can share that I'm aware of a situation in the community where there were a number of student athletes who, um, were exposed, um, last Wednesday. So this is certainly an issue for those students that, um, they've missed the tryouts that were scheduled for this past Monday. And if they test negative by the, um, Department of Public Health, um, rules, then they could be released from their Department of Public Health quarantine as early as tomorrow. Um, and if they go for like the 10 day option, they would be rele- released on Sunday. And if we, you know, but a 14 day keeps them out until Christmas, basically. Cause you know, it would be through December 23rd. And so then, you know, we don't have school or, um, athletics on the 24th or the 25th. So, um, it will have a significant impact on some student athletes from what I hear.
Thank you, Maya. I'm not quite sure how to continue this conversation, uh, to be candid. Dave?
Teresa, you know, when I say make a motion, I'm just trying to give Dave some direction. He's, he's definitely given us what he can, what he thinks is possible right now. I think we have a lot of information to digest before we make any changes. Um, you know, I, I, I'm all sympathetic for these athletes that Maya spoke of. You know, I just think that, you know, in this timeframe that we're in, you know, the people we have to talk to, I don't think we can actually do anything but table this and continue the policy that we currently have.
Hi, Joan?
I'm going to make a formal motion now that we go into executive session. I just don't, I, I think there are too many issues that are contractual that we need to have some clarity around before we can make a decision about whether or not we can make a decision. Cause we are at that point where we need to have a meeting about a meeting.
Um, is there a second on the motion to go into executive session?
I'll second that.
For the discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Um, can we, no, but wait, I want to make sure we have the right people in that session. I think Segal needs to join us. Sorry, Segal, if you're available. Um, anybody else, Dr. Thompson, you think needs to join us in executive session?
I guess me.
Yeah, you were, you were not given a choice. Sorry. Okay. So, um, it is 8:40. Uh, we will break for executive session. Um, assuming Dave, you want us to use the link from our last executive session?
Yep, I'm going to, uh, invite Segal right now.
Okay. Um, Dr. Galligan, Mr. Longley, I am sorry. We will be back to finish the discussion, um, that you were going to share with us around athletics.
I deeply apologize to both of you.
Uh, Maya.
Do we want to maybe announce a time that we will return? I, I mean, I guess that might hold things, but maybe it would be.
Um, Joan, do you have a second on how long the conversation you want to have may take?
Uh, it depends. Are you going to go my way or? No, I'm kidding. Um, I, I honestly think I have a very narrow question, um, that is contractual in nature that I think we can answer in 10 minutes or so.
Yeah.
Okay.
15.
10 to 15 minutes, yeah.
Okay. So at this time, we will enter into executive session and we will return, um, in public session in 10 to 15 minutes. Okay.
Okay.
Welcome back to the North School Committee Meeting of December 16th. Uh, we have reconvened after an executive session. Um, before executive session, we were discussing through some possible changes to testing and quarantine, uh, based off of recent, um, advice and recommendations from, and the Massachusetts DPH. Uh, we need to go into executive session to discuss some questions as it related to contracts. Um, but now we are ready to resume the rest of the conversation in open session. Um, is there a motion at this time from anybody on the committee about how we would like to proceed? Joan?
So I would like to make a motion that pertains solely to policies related to students, that we continue to follow the stricter of the two guys, the stricter, oh, here we go. The stricter of the two agencies, either DESI or MPH, as they outline and are, as they are related to quarantine and testing procedures.
Is there a second on that motion? Dave and Emery both second it, so I'll go with Dave. I saw his hand first. Um, any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Hi. Dr. Thompson, would you just clarify for the community what this motion means at this time?
Yeah, so, um, currently as we sit here this evening, the stricter policy is the DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, um, agency, I'm getting to that point of the night, sorry folks, uh, which requires a PCR test to test out of a, a non-symptomatic quarantine situation. Um, and if there was a negative test taken after the eighth day, uh, they would be released from quarantine after 10 days of quarantine. That is what the current DESI recommendation or guideline is at this point in time. Um, that's what the schools will go with at this point until we sort out, um, the future going, uh, going forward. But, um, that obviously is and works, but so everyone out there needs to know that, you know, obviously, you know, when you go to the doctor, just as we said early on, when there was some confusion about the antigen test, that, you know, we had people taking both tests. Um, sometimes doctors' offices will do that, but the PCR test is still what the school is, uh, requiring. So, um, with that being said, hopefully that is clear. And again, I would ask patients in the community, this is an ongoing, evolving situation and there's information and changes in policies as we keep, uh, moving down this, uh, this trail. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Um, I wanted to move up one agenda item really quickly, short discussion since Segal is here. Um, there is an MOU document that Dr. Thompson has been working on with Segal, um, to aid in this collaboration that we have going on between the schools and the Department of Public Health. Um, Dr. Thompson, would you like to, um, share more about that MOU?
Yes. Um, so let me, I'll just bring up, bring it up real quick if I can. This is not working very well tonight. Um, so as the, as the number of, uh, cases, uh, have, uh, increased, uh, the amount of, you know, when you have less cases to investigate, it's pretty easy to coordinate between the health department and our awesome school nurses. Uh, but as cases have increased, that has become more and more difficult. Uh, contact tracing is important in this, uh, prospect, uh, in this process. And in doing so, uh, it's important that, uh, people who are doing the tracing are able to get contact information as they are doing the investigation. Uh, we are now on the point where some of these investigations are starting in the evenings, starting on weekends, Sunday nights. Um, so this is an agreement between the North Public Schools and North Health Department for the sole purpose of allowing the health department investigators, the health department nurses to, uh, have access to our contact information only. Uh, we have set up, um, very limited access, um, sign-ins for that, but that will, uh, increase the ability and the speed at which we can contact trace as our numbers are, uh, increasing. This is not a totally unusual situation, but we did put in here, uh, that, um, this is for health purposes. This is for contact tracing. It is for a narrow purpose only. Um, and that it is only during, uh, this COVID-19 pandemic crisis. So I don't know if there's any questions from the committee that Segal or I could, uh, could answer?
Maya?
I'll just make a motion to approve this memorandum of understanding.
Thank you. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dave. Any further discussion? All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Okay, 5:00. Great.
Yeah, I, I really believe this is going to help, uh, make the work happen easier and faster and keep our community safe. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Um, Segal, was there any other information you wanted to share before we move on to our sports discussion?
Uh, yes, one quick, uh, little announcement and plug for, um, the flu clinic. Um, Jill Schumacher's leader has, um, been great arranging clinics at the schools for families. So this Friday, um, there'll be a flu clinic at the Coakley from 2:00 to 4:00 and also at the high school from 3:00 to 5:00. So Coakley 2:00 to 4:00, high school 3:00 to 5:00, uh, flu clinics for families.
Thank you. All right. So now we will move on to our discussion and update of winter athletics. Um, so Mr. Longley, Dr. Galligan, uh, welcome again, uh, to our very fun school committee meeting. Um, what do you have for us tonight in terms of an update on winter athletics?
Yeah, thanks so much for having us. Um, I'll turn it over, uh, pretty quickly to Mr. Longley, who can give you an update on the opening of winter athletics.
Dr. Thompson, do you just want to stop, um, sharing the screen then with the MOU?
Oh, sure. Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. And Mr. Longley.
Hello. Um, thanks for having me. So we, we started, I know we were, um, together a few weeks ago. We started winter sports this past Monday, which, um, a few of us were in a meeting Monday morning, which seems about like two months ago now, but it was actually just two days ago, which is quite interesting. But, um, anyways, we started, uh, Monday with boys and girls ice hockey, boys and girls basketball, uh, gymnastics and co-ed swim. So those are what the, the sports offerings, uh, for the winter season. Uh, we have about a, you know, 180, um, students registered, which is similar to, to the fall, which is about what we would expect for those sports offerings, which is, which is, which is good. Um, everything is off to a smooth start. We're following all of the EEA and MIA guidelines. I have been out to all the facilities, you know, the winter's a little bit different because we're not isolated, obviously, to the campus or to, you know, local parks. We're in facilities, um, you know, independent, private facilities, uh, other schools. Um, so I have been out to all the facilities and, um, you know, double checking with the coaches and the protocols and, and so forth. And, um, you know, we seem to be up and running fairly smoothly so far. And, um, just like everybody else, taking it one day at a time. Obviously things are moving fast and, um, every day is a little bit different, uh, but we're just going one day at a time, trying to keep, keep things as safe as possible and, you know, provide an opportunity, you know, for the kids to participate.
Mr. Longley, could you, uh, let them know when, um, competitions are expected to begin and what the schedule kind of looks like and how it shakes out this season?
Yeah, so right now we have, um, the first games are scheduled to begin, uh, the week that we return, um, after the new year. So, uh, basically it'll follow, um, a similar schedule uh, to, to the past in some ways where, you know, basketball will play their traditional Tuesdays and Fridays, hockey, their, the typical Wednesdays and Saturdays. Um, and we, we did tweak things a little bit, um, because of, um, the virus where we'll be competing against the same school, uh, during the same week, doing a home and home as we did it in the fall, just not on the weekend, but, you know, on those two days. So essentially it'll be about a five week season, which will bring us to, uh, the week before February vacation. And the, and the plan right now is, you know, to leave that week before February vacation and potentially February vacation for makeup games, um, to occur if there are postponements or cancellations during the course of the season. As we saw in the fall, we left, you know, the last weekend of the fall open for makeups, which we had to, we ended up using that, so.
There are questions from the committee so far? Is there anything at this time specifically, um, Mr. Longley, Dr. Galligan, that you need from the committee?
No, uh, nothing specifically at this time. We just wanted to provide kind of an update here, obviously, as Mr. Longley said, and you all have been, um, discussing. Um, you know, it's a day-to-day, uh, operation. Um, and, and so, um, we're very thankful for, um, our, uh, two nurses, um, Jen Hardery and Kathy Crowley at the high school. They've done an amazing job. And to, um, uh, the nurses at the health department, Segal, of course, um, for their collaboration and communication. Um, I can't, uh, explain to you how, um, how hard our nurses are working to keep our school community, um, safe and keep the lines of communication open. Um, and so that's been extremely important and as cases increase, um, that becomes more complicated, um, and harder. So, um, that communication becomes even more, um, crucial at that time. And, and so that we are thankful and grateful all around for, for their efforts.
Thank you. Um, something that I was talking with Dr. Thompson about that I, I do want to put before the full school committee with Mr. Longley and Dr. Galligan here, um, hope I'm not jinxing us and we're right around the corner, um, with break. Um, but if there would be a staffing issue that drives the need to pivot the high school to remote before break, um, the current guidance from MIA and DESI, and I confirm this with, um, our field director from MASCE, is that if the high school were to pivot remote for any reason, that is a decision and discussion that has to come before the school committee? And, you know, as Joan already identified, we don't meet again until January 13th. And although I think we might need to meet before that, I'm hoping it's not too soon. Um, so I was wondering if we could just, uh, preemptively have a discussion that if in the event the high school does need to pivot to remote because of a staffing concern, not because of in-school transmission or infection, but a staffing concern, would the school committee feel comfortable from now until the break saying that athletics can continue? Dave, time?
I think that seems fine. I mean, um, it's two different groups of people, right?
Yeah, I mean, this, this would be like a staffing if the, if, um, you know, uh, maybe Dr. Galligan to talk a little bit more about like the staffing and how that might drive the need to.
Sure. Um, so, um, based on kind of the flow chart of, of the reasons that, uh, Um, so um, based on kind of the flow chart of, of the reasons that uh a grade, a school, a district might, might, or us as a district might need to close and kind of um the order of operations we follow there, one of those uh steps in um, I don't know if it's zone two or three or whatever, one of the ones in the middle uh that we presented a few, that Segal presented a couple of weeks ago. Um, but uh one of the considerations there is adequate staffing, obviously. A high school's unique. Um, it's not as simple as um, you know, uh, you could um go remote in a grade, uh, you know, because teachers teach all different grades and students have classes with students in different grades. Um, so, um, but the high school does, is able to um cover each other um period by period a little bit more easily than some other schools would as well. So, um, oftentimes, you know, when we have teachers out for any reason, um, we hope to get a substitute. That is very rare these days for um, obviously, it was, it was rare anyways, but it's more rare now. Um, and so we're relying on internally um for staff to cover uh each other. Um, and so um if you get to, we can do that until we can't do that. Um, and um, right now we can do it. And uh, you know, we're very hopeful that we can continue to do so because, you know, that's extremely valuable to keep that in-person schooling uh available. Um, and that happens, as I said, like on a period-by-period basis, right? So, um, you know, we're able to manage it. Sometimes it gets tricky. Um, but I think the important thing to note is um uh, Madam Chair is right that, you know, if, if we go remote for any reason, you know, the um guidance states that then the school committee would discuss athletics and whether athletics would or should continue. I think it probably makes sense if it were for that reason and that reason only that, you know, you could entertain the option of athletics continuing to run if it was for a concern of rising student cases and general safety in the school community or district, then that's a different discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Galligan. Um, so again, just in, you know, taking into consideration time, um, you know, where we are in the calendar and um when we meet again and hoping that we're not in this situation. Um, but if the high school does need to pivot for staffing reasons only between now and the break, is the school committee comfortable with giving the go-ahead now that athletics can continue? Maya?
Should we maybe say if the high school has to go remote from now until January thirteenth, until our next meeting, if they have to go remote for stu-, for um staffing reasons, that we are comfortable with athletics continuing?
That would be smart to minimize the chance that we have to get back together again. No offense to anybody.
Yeah, I, I like that. Um, I wanted to add a friendly amendment. I know that it's that you said from staffing. I'd like to make it very clear that as long as there's no in-school transmission, can we add that?
Yeah.
Phrase, is that a friendly amendment to add to your motion?
Well, I haven't really made a motion yet. I just kinda threw it out there to everyone.
I thought Maya did. I was taking that as a motion, Maya. I think that was a fantastic motion.
I think, I think Dave Catania had actually made a motion. And so then I think, I guess I should have phrased mine as an amendment to extend it out to um to uh, you know, January thirteenth, but I will agree to as long as there is no in-school transmission.
So, an amendment to the amendment to Dave's motion.
That's what we're doing tonight, I guess.
Of course, our last meeting of 2020 is following this type of uh flow. Um, so motion on table that if um high school needs to pivot uh for staffing reasons and there is no in-school transmission between now and our next school committee meeting of January thirteenth, 2021, we give the permission for athletics to continue. Is there a second on that full motion? Joan, okay? All in favor of that motion?
Alright.
Okay. One last thing we have to worry about and hopefully it doesn't come to that. I hope you can continue to staff the school. Um, but I just wanted to talk about that preventatively, preemptively tonight.
Thank you.
Anything else on athletics, um, Mr. Longley?
No, just um, just to reiterate what, what you said, just the open communication and, and you know, obviously thanks to Jen and Kathy and the nurse office of the high school, but also the communication with Segal and the Bo-, Board of Health. I mean, we're all in constant communication and that's really, I think, been one of the main reasons why we're, you know, been so effective to this point. So.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for all your hard work, Mr. Longley. Alright, so moving right along to um our next appearance. Um, so Dr. Galligan, do not go away yet. Um, Dr. Galligan and, and Dr. Frazek um are here to talk to us about um the Norwood School Listen Initiative and a brief equity update. Um, there's been some conversations in the Strategic Planning Committee and then in some of the other administrative work um around this initiative. Um, so Dr. Galligan, would you like to share more of this?
Sure. Thank you so much for uh giving Dr. Frazek and I the opportunity to come uh and speak briefly about this. I promise it'll be brief. Um, but uh, a- at this point, um, based on some of the strategic work and Dr. Frazek can talk a little bit about one of the initiatives that she's been um closely working on. Um, there are one of the strategic objectives she's been closely working on uh during our planning meetings. But um one of the things that has come out of these discussions is the, the need for a committee um specifically to look at diversity, equity and inclusion efforts in the Norwood Public Schools. Um, and um, that can be a, a committee that is made up of, of um staff, but um could have other represented, representatives as well um from other areas of, of the school community or community at large. Um, but really the um the primary goal would be first to take an inventory of the work we are doing. We have some, some really good um work happening in the area of diversity, equity, inclusion, professional development um for our staff, for our leaders, for our um staffs in each school. And also kind of taking into account the work that was done um over the summer and early fall um to lay the groundwork for Norwood Listens um and some of the um questions that were put together for a potential survey um for school community members. Um, so this, this group would take a look at what are we currently doing and help form a direction for, for where we need to go, who we need to partner with um to be able to continue to advance in this work um and make sure that we're keeping it at the forefront of all of the work we're doing.
Thank you. Dr. Frazek, would you have anything on the initiative and the work it's been a part of?
Yeah, um, you know, similar to what Dr. Galligan was talking about. So, um, I'm one of the administrators that's working on Strategic Objective Five, which I believe we um, we put forward to the school committee to change slightly, to really add a little bit more focus on um culturally relevant um anti-bias training practices um around the school. So, and Norwood Listens ties very much into that and the work that we wanna do and endgame with this committee. Um, and just like Dr. Galligan was saying, it's really just to make sure that um we're using that lens as we look to all of the work that we do for all of our students. Um, right now, we're doing a week of inclusion. Um, it's tied to Unified Champion School over at CMS and part of that is making sure that all of our students feel that they belong. Um, inclusion is not just about special education. It's also about uh students from all of our very many different communities here in Norwood and neighborhoods and making sure that they belong. Um, then additionally, we also started World Savvy. Um, and some of the work being done there is just incredible. Um, just made a very, very short video for World Savvy to get upon their request about the work that we started doing with them. Um, and one of my ELA teachers was just sharing how they're tying this new work into um some very traditional things that they have always done. So, it's really kind of exciting to see um this really forward-moving development. So, I think uh what Dr. Galligan came about in terms of creating a group of people and a lot of stakeholders, making sure that there's a lot of voices being heard to uh, to move the, the district forward in this manner.
So, I believe the, the request coming forth to the committee is to ask Dr. Thompson to start a diversity, equity and inclusion task force. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yep.
Uh, questions, discussion from the committee on that request? Is there a motion to ask Dr. Thompson to form that task force?
I'm happy to make that motion. It's a great idea.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Maya. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, five zero. So, Dr. Thompson, uh, one more thing to please do. Work with your initiative team to form the task force on um diversity, equity and inclusion. Thank you, Dr. Galligan and Dr. Frazek.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. So, I knew the appearance section of our agenda was heavy and going to take up a large time of our meeting. I did not quite anticipate this long, but we are now moving along to Dr. Thompson's um superintendent report and update.
Yeah, um, Madam Chair, I was gonna suggest that um we have uh Dr. Frazek, maybe it's not necessarily uh timed to, to have his uh kill him refresh tonight and uh push that off till, till after the break. You can think about that, but let me uh, let me uh climb up into, uh, sorry, I'm on the wrong tab.
Um, that's right. You're breaking up a little bit, at least on my end. I don't know if it's for everybody, but I just wanna clarify. Did you ask for Dr. Wyatt's portion to be moved to another agenda?
Yes.
I, I'm fine with that. The rest of the committee is, or if there was anything Dr. Wyatt felt was urgent for tonight?
I'm fine with that, too.
Okay, we can move out to the January thirteenth agenda.
Okay, alright. So, let me uh bring up a quick little slides, keep me on track here and um give people something to look at besides just me. Uh, so just a quick up strategic plan. As you know, uh, we started um we started this year revising uh and updating the plan. We had a one-year, goals for one year, and this year we uh tackled this as a two, set of two-year goals. Um, we did find it a little more challenging to partake in this uh in a virtual environment. It's a little, it's a little more difficult to share between groups um through um, you know, video conferencing and, and breakout rooms that are very separate. But we managed to soldier on and uh, and get through that. So, I'd like to kinda go over uh some significant revisions uh in the plan uh and talk a little bit when I come back about key performance indicators and next steps. So, I'm going to um change over to um the strategic plan and I'm gonna quickly, let me um actually make this a little bit bigger so it's easier to read. That look better?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Alright, so um, the first one was about, you know, the um, you know, the first, the first goal is about um investment and resource and allocation. Um, and key to that was um was the budget process. And most of that remains the same as a few um pieces in here that were kind of new. Uh, one of which being on kind of looking at long-term projections and budget planning, uh, creating a budget uh school business manual, which is something that would assist everybody in the running and the financial operations of, of the system. Um, and the work around an MOU, a memorandum of understanding with PTOs to discuss equity across districts and part, and create a partner role between the PTOs and the Norwood Public Schools. Um, we also wanna make sure that we are, you know, in, involved with the community. And one of the main aspects about that is, as you heard earlier, on our middle school building uh pro-, uh process. And we need to be key, key to that. And, you know, you saw those, uh, those dates uh marked in the uh, in, in the timeline. Um, you know, aligning school resources, uh, big things with this. Uh, one, actually, I missed this one. Uh, one of these is a, around uh aligning human resources and some of that work has already started. Uh, becoming more digital and uh collecting things instead of passing papers back and forth. Uh, although we have brought on munis, there's definitely more work to be done with that. Uh, definitely around reporting, uh, budget preparation and really harnessing the full uh power of, of that uh software. We're only kinda scratching at the surface. Uh, and also under one, um, you know, the restructuring of the Student Services Department. Uh, we talked a little bit about that at the end, but that is a goal looking forward over the next two years and phasing that in. Um, and then we get into the second one, which is around facilities and uh operation. Um, so the big thing I'll be here is, you know, the school, middle school building project and that educational aspects and a plan and looking at the grade configuration from five to eight and six to eight. Uh, and really gonna have to be uh between now, most of the work between now and March uh and getting a final plan and recommendation by the, by the end of the year. Um, so again, this is all in the school uh building project. And all of these timelines you've already seen before, so I'm not gonna go through all of them, but uh this is, this whole process is really um, you know, controlled with the timeline with the MSBA. Um, so, you know, definitely we, we want to keep working on our infrastructure and um, and technology plan. Um, so one thing with that is between December and March, develop the next three-year strategic technology plan and those district goals. Um, so that is going to be starting in the next month or so uh around that, and that's being headed by Joe Kidd. So, that is uh new. And then moving on to the third one, which is innovative instruction and personalized learning. So, new uh on this, um, you know, we want to keep working with making uh, you know, including those inclusive practices. And uh, as you know, we engaged Katie Novak with under um Universal Design for Learning. Um, we've had two pieces with that at our secondary level, and that is to extend uh in the future at the elementary level. Um, so again, inclusive practices are a big piece of what we're trying to do, and we want kids in their courtrooms with their peers uh learning as much as possible. Uh, the next kind of new piece, you know, leveraging technology to optimize uh digital personal learning and student engagement. Um, we, we've kind of really pushed this, a, a lot of these, and some of these we've, we've actually um codified or recognizing some of the work that happened uh between the end of last year and the beginning of this year. But this is still going to be a big pit, push, and I have told our staff to uh, to really look at what are the key learnings and takeaways. Um, our work around technology this year in this COVID uh pandemic situation. What are we gonna be carrying forward that are best practices to use? Again, um, plans for Understanding uh Universal Design for Learning and the PD. Uh, you can see that those are being codified in there and you can see that pre-K to five uh will be starting next fall. Uh, programs and pathways. And again, a lot of this is about extending the work that has been, already started last year and enhancing uh the programs. There's not necessarily a lot of new things there except for, you know, identifying new business po-, partners, funding needs and, and extending another pathway. Um, so safest supportive uh schools. That's, that's yellow because someone made it yellow. I didn't, I don't, didn't make it yellow. But the key thing here is we wanna increase the district capacity for cultural responsive practices through targeted and embedded sustained professional development that encompass all aspects of school life. And um, we've talked about this before, World Savvy competency training. Um, and, you know, piloted some of those materials early on, but this is definitely a focus coming through the leadership team as in the, right now, working with Highland Industry on cultural responsive uh teaching and learning. Uh, and that actually has been a fantastic uh program, but that is a new piece or an extended piece uh to item five. Um, the connections piece is the same, except that we have added in here the Norwood Schools Listen Initiative, which you just heard a little bit about. Um, and, you know, engaging in the dialogue with parents around and members of the community around systemic racism uh in our schools. So, that is added into the plan. And those are kind of the significant changes and highlights. So, let me go back over um to this. So, the, so these have been um, so we've shared these final objectives uh with uh on strategy, which again is our web um, our, our web host of, of our plan and tracker of our plan. So, the next um uh, the next piece is, so these are complete. Uh, we do need to spend a little more time kind of tweaking our key performance indicators, and that's going to happen in January. We're looking at those to really make some more measurable um and data-informed uh progress goals. Um, we have a good start. Actually, um, our consultant, Kim, was very impressed with the key, uh, the KPIs that we had, but felt that with a little bit of tweaking and training, um, we are also going to do some training or some refreshed training around uh using the platform and, and um, and um updating it and making sure everybody, we do have some new uh principals and other key staff with us, so making sure that they are all up to speed with that and have access and see how it works. Um, and then works. And then, you know, go through and begin tracking the work that is actually currently having, and hopefully our first update would be in March. So with that, let me go back over, did I, oh, I didn't, you didn't see that last slide, did you? I'm sorry. I was showing you a slide. I didn't hit the right chair button. Anyways, any questions from the committee? I, I do want to thank Maya and Teresa for, for joining in all of our sessions. We had Anne Haley join us as well, representing the FinCom, as well as Jody Smith from, from the Teachers Union, giving her perspective, but it was a lot of great work. You know, the energy in that room is really, even at three o'clock in the afternoon, the quality of the people, they're really actually making enjoyable. It definitely was a little bit more of a challenge this time around, but I think that the, you know, the plan is still the plan. The five key areas are still the five key areas, just making sure that we have them tweaked for where we are, and these goals are running through June of 22. I don't know if there's any particular questions or other things that members of the committee want to have me bring up and show and talk about, but it would be great if we could get certification from the committee on these so that we can move to these final steps and stuff.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Are there any questions or feedback from the committee on the final objectives that we already voted on last year, but really the initiatives, I think, is what we need approval of tonight? Maya?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
I will second, or Kelly's first.
I saw, I saw your hand go first on my camera, Dave, so I'll say that you seconded it, but any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Okay, thank you. The other, the other quick update I have is on some changes that we made, and I'll bring it up here in one second as soon as I can find it. So one of the changes that we made, if you, everyone can see this, I hope, is that we did update our employer description. This is a page or the, you know, when we post a position, we post it through school spring, and it gives background information on our district, and we did change some of the language here, hoping to entice more diverse candidates to apply, and I'll just read it to the community because it might be hard to see at home. At, at the Norwood Public Schools, we believe that every student deserves to learn from educators, reflect their backgrounds and life experiences, and we want all of our staff to reflect the wide range of student identities we serve. To this end, Norwood Public Schools is committed to increasing the diversity of our teachers and leaders. We believe that by building a more representative workforce, all students will have better outcomes and be more prepared for increasingly diverse world. We welcome and encourage the following candidates, applicants, candidates of color, individuals with diverse life experience and non-traditional backgrounds, anti-racist educators, and those who prioritize diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then we have learned more about us and has our employer profile in there. So I just wanted to share that just to update the community and the committee on the work that we've been doing around diversity and inclusion.
Maya, do you have a question?
Nope, that's good.
Oh, okay.
All right. And for the, on the, trying to be brief, I will finish, call that as the end of the Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Any questions or feedback at this time from the committee? Okay, so we'll move Dr. Wyatt's presentation on the curriculum update and cycle to our January 13th meeting. So now we move along to budget. Ms. Sheridan, I believe you have a report on some budget transfers?
I do. Excuse me. Thank you very much. Well, as you know, last year, last fiscal year, we changed the budget transfer policy, which has really helped to keep the purchasing flowing quickly on some of these smaller budget transfers. So tonight I just have a few budget transfers that are report-only, that were approved by the Superintendent. The first one was some budget transfers for some expenditures coming in higher than anticipated. There was a language lab at the high school, but that was higher due to the virtual system. The nursing software came in higher than anticipated, and the Renaissance Assessment Tool came in higher than anticipated. On the second transfer from Laurie Semino was to transfer from Summer Paris to sped software for an assessment tool that she wanted to purchase. And the third was from Steve Bilhaj, the principal at Willett, for additional supplies and fencing around the playground. The total, there was three of them, and the total of them were $15,096. So those are the three budget transfers. Again, it's wonderful. We really get to get these purchases going much quicker on these small budget transfers. So I thank you for that. The second thing I have is a budget timeline for FY22. I don't know if anybody can bring it up if you want to.
Yeah, Dr. Thompson, will you pull up the timeline as Karen, and then Maya is also going to help share the update from the Budget Subcommittee?
That's just because I'm the best sharer, so I can share it really well. See if I can get this a little bigger. Ooh, how's that?
Good. So as you know, the first step in the budget process is a budget timeline. So we have the budget timeline here for you to review. It gives us steps, each step and the dates of the step. We began with an admin meeting today where we reviewed the FY22 process. This afternoon, all the budget request forms were put into the Google Docs, to Google's Docs this year. We moved over to Google Docs for the budget forms for the staff, gathering all the staff information. That's new to somebody like me who's finance and Excel, so I know all the educators are very happy with that. The, on January 6th, we have an admin principals' meeting to review the enrollment and staffing for FY22. Obviously, ongoing, we review contractual obligations and expenditure history and gather all the information for the budget time, for the budget lines. On January 13th, the budget is due from the staff to the principals, for the principals to review for approval. And then on January 20th, the principals and the directors are to send to the Superintendent and the Director of Finance all of their budget lines that they, budget requests that they have. January 27th to February 3rd, we have individual meetings with the principals and the directors to review the budget requests. Here we start to develop the budget lines and improve the understanding of the budget. In the month of February, that's when I begin to compile the preliminary budget, although I've already started to begin to build that budget. The, February 24th, the School Committee will get budget version A presented to the School Committee with no more than a 3.5% increase. And March to April, we have the Budget Balancing Committee. March 10th, we have the School Committee would get budget updates and revisions. March 24th, again, we have a School Committee meeting with budget updates and revisions. March 31st, the budget public hearing and the School Committee meeting and the approval of the budget, and then go to April with the Finance Committee meeting. And then in April, the budget goes to the printers. And May 10th, the annual town meeting. So that's the budget timeline that we have right now. And does anybody have any questions on that?
Thank you, Karen. Just one thing that I would point out to the committee, I did email about this date, but we are adding a meeting on March, just for you, Joan, we're adding the meeting. No, March 31st, we're adding a meeting, because we were just looking at everything on the long-term agenda, and as we saw earlier from, you know, the design team for the middle school, there's a lot of middle school work that has to happen in March, and we just didn't feel confident we could get it all in. So we are adding March 31st specifically for the budget hearing. But Maya, did you want to share more?
I just wanted to mention about the budget hearing. I mean, traditionally, we had done the budget hearing at the end of April, but at that point, it was kind of too late to do anything about the budget because it had already gone to the printers, it had already gone to FinCom. I mean, certainly there can be amendments made, you know, after that, but we had decided last year to have the budget hearing before the budget was truly finalized, or I guess really when the budget is truly finalized, and we decided to continue with that this year. We just feel it's kind of more respectful of the community to, to get, provide an opportunity for feedback before the School Committee takes a final vote.
Are there any questions from the rest of the committee on this timeline? No? Okay. So the next item in the budget is talking a little bit more about the baseline budget if we remove facilities, and this is something that the Budget Subcommittee has started to work on. And Maya, would you like to get us started with this discussion?
Sure. So you will all recall that when we signed the MOU about the joint facilities, we had said that for FY21, we would keep everything that was, you know, all the facility stuff in our budget, but that starting in FY22, the plan would be to move facilities to its own budget. So there will be some things coming out of the general government budget that will move to the joint facilities budget, some things coming out of the School Committee budget moving to the joint facilities, and then that will become like a third group. You know, when we do the, the, like, looking at the townwide budget, we look at the revenue coming in, we look at the, you know, the, the shared, the utility expenses going out, the shared costs going out, things like benefits and things like that that have to be done. And then we used to split things 55% to schools and 45% to general government. That split has changed a little bit recently, but now instead of splitting into two pieces of the pie, it will now split into three. And in order for us to, so I think there's two important things that we have to start doing now is, one, make clear what we are moving from our budget so that we make sure that everything gets placed into the facilities budget. We don't want everybody to think like, oh, I thought you had that, you had that, and suddenly we realize that, you know, we've dropped $100,000 or whatever it is. So we need to make sure that we're very clear about what we are thinking is moving out of our budget. When we meet with the selectmen, we will be talking about, you know, what will be moving out of the general government budget and try and figure out what needs to go into this joint facilities budget. But the other thing is, we kind of need to have a new baseline for like, what would the School Committee budget have been if we didn't have facilities in there in FY21, so that then when we are doing our FY21 to FY22 comparison, we can do an apples-to-apples comparison. So Ms. Sheridan started this exercise of pulling out, you know, doing an imaginary budget. This is not a real budget. We're not passing anything at this point, but if we had done the FY21 budget without facilities, what would it have looked like? And the answer is, our budget would have been about $4.8 million smaller, and so that represents like a 9% decrease in the budget. So if we then go up 3.5%, we're going to start, you know, first, we're going to go down 4.8 million, and then we can go up the 3.5%. And that will be our new target number for our FY22 budget.
And with this, that 3.5% would be $49,572,880. That would be the target if it went with this.
Great, thank you.
Are there any questions from the committee on removing the facilities from our budget? Okay. Maya, do you want to share a little bit more about the process that we need to resume with the Joint Facilities Department?
Sure. So we had said that we would meet annually, a group, two members of the selectmen, two members of the School Committee, the Paul Ricardi, Dr. Thompson, Tony Mizuko, and get together and talk about how it's going and any changes that we want to make to the MOU. So I think some of the things that, well, there, there's one thing in the MOU that said that, at least for the first year, that the people who had offices at the Savage Center were going to stay at the Savage Center, but they are planning to move, so we need to change that language. And we need to make sure that we're clear on what items are moving out of the budget. We need to make sure that we're clear on any contractual agreements we have, collective bargaining that may be impacted by this transition, and we need to look at the revolving fund accounts and how those will be used or not used. And, and specifically, I think there's also some questions about building rentals and, you know, who will be setting rates for rentals of the building, and who will be, and what the guidelines would be for, who can rent the space, because I think that that's something that the schools still want to have control over. We want to, you know, like, be able to set some policies about what types of renters we would allow to come in and use our, our facilities. You know, things like we, in the past, we have allowed like dance studios to come in and hold, you know, functions in the auditorium, but we might not want to allow maybe political rallies or something like that. I don't know. We'd need to think about what it is, but, you know, I think there would be some things that we might think were, were not really an appropriate use of the schools, even if it's not school-sponsored, but, so we need to kind of hash out a few things like that. Teresa, did I miss anything? I had a list, and I, I'm not sure.
I think you covered it. The only thing that I would just, you know, bring to the committee and the community is, as Maya said, we do need two School Committee members to work on that process with two Board of Selectmen, and Maya has been very involved with the joint facilities process from the beginning, so thank you. And I was involved with it last year, but just being so involved right now with the Middle School Building Committee, I know I don't have the bandwidth or the time to work on it right now, the joint facilities. So I have asked Anne Marie to consider working with Maya on the joint facilities MOU and process moving forward. So Anne Marie and Maya, are you both willing to continue that work?
Yes.
Maybe.
Thank you. And Maya did reach out to the selectmen a couple weeks ago to request that we start to get this process moving, and Chair Plasko wrote back recently that last night at their Board of Selectmen meeting, he did appoint Tom Maloney and Matt Lee to be the representatives from the Board of Selectmen. So Maya, would you be comfortable following up on that email and working with the selectmen and Dr. Thompson and Tony to get a meeting?
Sure, sure. I can do that.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the committee on the joint facilities process? Okay. Anything else budget-related that we needed to bring up tonight, Ms. Sheridan or Dr. Thompson?
No, I think that's, that's fine.
Okay. So old business, just a couple of really quick items. Dr. Thompson, could you pull up the documents on the agenda, so the School Committee goals? So we did already vote on the goals at our last meeting, but in the last draft, I had a lot of like notes in there for us to consider as we were finalizing the, the goals. So I just wanted to share the cleaned-up version of the whole language, because I would like to have this on our website so the community can clearly see the goals that we've committed to as a School Committee. And I just wanted to make sure everybody is comfortable, you know, with the language before you, obviously moving out that red part, which is just an additional note, but is everybody comfortable with the document, with the language that is there? Yes, okay. So we'll work with our tech department to get that up on our website. So then, Dr. Thompson, if you would open up the other document that's linked on School Committee assignments. So if it's not evident to the community already, we are a very busy School Committee of only five, and there is a lot of work ahead. So if everybody is comfortable with these assignments for our standing committees, which is budget and policy, for this next cycle of budget, that'll continue to be Maya and I, and for right now, the policy work will continue to be Joan and I, as we are entering that partnership with MASC and the audit. We do have five sets of contracts to negotiate. Some have already started, some need to start soon. So between the four of you, assignments for the different negotiation teams, so Maya and So Maya and Joan for Unit A, Dave and Anne Marie for both Unit B and Unit 50. And then Dave and Joan for when the time is right to start it again, the administrative assistance and food services. And then the middle school building work that we had the presentation on earlier. So Dave and I have already been on the Middle School Building Committee as representatives, so staying with that appointment. Anne Marie is going to join the visioning workshops that you heard Keilia talk about earlier tonight. The first workshop is tomorrow, the second workshop is January 7th. And then I have already been part of this core leadership team with Dr. Thompson, Dr. Frazek, and Mr. Slater. And then the townwide work. So as we just discussed, the joint facilities MOU between Maya and Anne Marie. Anne Marie was willing and already participating on Capitol Outlay. And then the Budget Balancing Committee, Maya and I. Because unless the committee disagrees, I think it probably makes sense to keep the Budget Subcommittee and the BBC representation the same. But if there's any request to do something different or any feedback on this document and the work of our committee, I am open to that. Is everybody good with this? Okay. Thank you for all the work that all of you continue to do. We do not have any policy items, consent, oh, excuse me, new business. I missed the new business. So we already approved the MOU with the Health Department, but we do need to approve the contracts for Unit B and the MOU with Unit B. And Anne Marie and Dave have been working with Dr. Thompson on this. So would one of you like to share a brief synopsis of the contract and the MOU with Unit B? Anne Marie?
I saw Dave hand up.
No, it was a good question. I don't have it in front of me.
I thought I was off the hook. So we did negotiate with Unit B. And first of all, the MOU for this year. So similar to Unit A's MOU, and that was, you know, the working conditions, the change in working conditions, you know, with this year and the COVID restrictions and such. And then we also worked with them on a one-year contract. So that will be for this year, ending in September of '21, correct? Yes. So we will need to jump right back into that. But we were able to get a one-year contract approved with Unit B. I don't know what other details I'm supposed to give at this time.
Yeah, I mean, it involves some contract language and a cost of living increase of 2%.
Correct. Thank you. Any feedback from the committee on the contract or the MOU? Is there a motion to approve these two documents?
So moved.
Thank you, Maya. Joan, is that a second?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Five zero. And Anne Marie and Dave, thank you for your work on that and your continued work that is ongoing with Unit B. Okay, so at this time, it's consent agenda. Dr. Thompson, we have donations tonight?
Yes, we have donations from Bay State Textiles for a grand total of $504.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept that donation?
Motion to accept.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Dave. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Great. So at this time, a school committee addenda. Anne Marie, did you have anything this evening?
Nothing this evening, except I hope everybody has a great holiday break, relaxing, not, stay safe. And we hope everybody has a great New Year.
Thank you. Maya?
I agree. Yeah, happy holidays, happy New Year, Merry Christmas, the whole bit. And hope everybody gets a little bit of a break.
Thank you. Joan?
I just want to, again, wish everybody a good break. And there is light at the end of the tunnel. It is coming. We are going to get to start planning for the return to school full-time, I think, this year. I'm very excited. Oh, not this calendar year. Sorry, this academic year.
I was going to say, what meeting are you adding to our calendar in the next?
I will be with you every day if it's about how to have the kids go back to school full-time.
Thank you, Joan. Dave?
It's amazing that this incredible, unusual year is coming to an end. So everybody, you know, stay safe, let in the tunnel. 2021 is going to be a great year for everyone. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, et cetera. Thank you for everything, everyone. Keep it up.
Thank you, Dave. I will keep this brief. Unfortunately, I'm not just saying happy holidays. But I just have to, like, use this time to once again advocate and encourage others to advocate with the state and with Desi. I already expressed some frustration in our earlier conversation around, you know, the health protocol and standards, but I'm really disappointed. I'm disappointed in them and I'm disappointed in Desi. And at the board meeting yesterday, they brought in experts to talk about the mental health and well-being of youth. And all the experts have stated, which we all know and we've talked about here before, how our youth is struggling right now. And they missed an opportunity, I think, to take that conversation and make a difference. Because after hearing testimony on the mental health needs of their students, they then go on to talk about restriction, not restriction, requirements and wanting more time on learning, which please don't take this the wrong way. I'm not against time on learning. But I don't know how you take a conversation around the mental health needs of students and not address what is at the core. And they were saying that, you know, for so many of the districts in Massachusetts, which does not apply to Norwood because we're doing a phenomenal job, that they needed, you know, more synchronous learning and that students needed that. And I agree, they do. But they just missed the whole opportunity to talk about what schools and communities could really be doing for students right now, rather than just focus on the academics only. And Desi continues to push forward with the MCAS. And I don't know if they're oblivious. I don't know if they don't care. I don't know if they're not listening. But none of those three are acceptable. So I will continue to do everything that I can to advocate and support our students as whole people and not just academically. So I just wanted to put that out there and ask others in the community to please advocate as well. But on that note, thank you once again to all of you, to our staff. I'm really, really proud of Norwood and everything that we continue to do during this challenging time. And I also wish everybody happy holidays, happy New Year. 2021 has to be better than 2020. We'll make it that way. But at this time, our meeting has come to an end. Thank you, everybody, for your participation tonight. So I just made a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Is there a second? Thank you, Joan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We'll be back on January 13th. Be well.